Can we have?
But still, I mean, agendas. But any of these?
Did everybody's attention please silence your cell phones now. You've had Smith or options recently, so double check them and make sure you got it given on silent or vibrate. Before we start meeting, thank you.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice pro.
That you said working towards.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe. Wasn't whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian tribe and recognize that through three bands of Ojibwe. Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land in our community. Clerk Wixson, will you please take the role?
Commissioner Elseger.
Here.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
Commissioner Brichbacher.
Here.
Commissioner Rollins.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eke. Mayor Wingard.
Here.
You have.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into proclamations and presentations. Manager of Dissents would like to take over.
First up, our first one is the introduction of Planning and Community Development Intern Yu Yang Ding by Director of Planning and Community Development, Manuela Pobidaco.
Good evening, everybody. So our intern is about to arrive, so I really apologize. But I'll start. So I'm excited to introduce our new planning intern who will be joining us to work on the planning community development department on the new housing report. And Yu Yang is his name, Yu Yang Ding, and he's currently pursuing a master's degree in urban and regional planning at the University of Michigan. He has a strong interest in land use and community development, and we are thrilled to have him on board and look forward to his contributions here. So please join me in welcoming Yu Yang and feel free to reach out if you want to see more about his work.
Good timing.
Yeah. Next up, I'm going to introduce Instructional Media and Design Intern Tyler Roop. So I'm excited to introduce a new intern who joined us on Wednesday last, June 11th, sorry, Wednesday, June 11th, to work on instructional media and design projects. Please join me in welcoming Tyler Roop to our team. Tyler is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in film, television, and media at the University of Michigan. He demonstrates both a strong interest in and proficiency with media and film production. We are thrilled to have him on board and we look forward to his contributions. Again, please join me in welcoming Tyler.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and while manager of Dissents gets settled back in, last item, we have a presentation of the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by Redabelt Hafner.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Not so much a presentation of the audit, but just an update as to where the audit stands. The audit has been extended to July 31st. Normally, it's due to the state by June 30, but it's been extended through July. Just wanted to let you know that the audit is very, very near completion. We have completed, there's both the financial statement audit and a single audit of the federal money. We have completed the single audit of the federal money. So that that one's done. The other one is well underway. Everything that is completed has been reviewed. And we are just waiting on one area, which is cash. One of the cash accounts is yet to be reconciled completely, and staff is working diligently to do that. And once that is done, we'll have some other adjustments to do and then get the the rest of the comprehensive financial report completed. There's different sections, the statistical, management discussion and analysis, and transmittal letter all have to be completed after that. So it is well underway. There is going to be a finding on the single audit of nothing significant, which we can go over next month. I plan on being back here at the end of July to go over the final report with you. Are there any questions I can address in that regard?
Commissioner Zhang.
You said you will be back in July for our last meeting in July?
That is my plan. Yes. I haven't been officially invited yet, but.
We invite you.
Other questions from members of the commission? Not seeing any. Thank you for being up here for this update.
Yep, very, thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Not seeing any from the commission, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. All right. At this time, we move on to public input on agenda items. So a little bit of prep, as you can all see, we do have a bit of a full house this evening, so I'm glad to see all of you here to tell us how wonderful everything's going at the city right now. Public comments and public hearings are opportunities for the public to comment on business and non-business items. Questions will not be answered during these times and instead should be directed to City Hall staff during normal business hours. Right now, we will be having a public, we will be having public comments on agenda items only. So if you are, I believe there may be members of the audience who are concerned about the special use permit for Pickard and Bemaine concerning the installation of the Chris gas station. If that is, I would would ask that you withhold your comments until public comments on non-agenda items, which occurs towards the end of the meeting. Just trying to be respectful of everyone's time here. For those who would like to give public comments, you may step up to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. You may please state your name and address for the record. I will raise my hand when we've hit the 30, when you have 30 seconds remaining, and if we go over, I'll need to cut you off. Or if it's not on an agenda item, I may have to politely interrupt you and cut you off so we can be respectful of everyone's time here today. But at this time, again, if you have any public comments on agenda items, please step up to the podium at this time.
Good evening. My name is Megan Moreno. I live at 201 North Brown Street. And I'm speaking tonight regarding item number 14 on the agenda. Rezoning proposal Z 2502, the request to rezone 1104 East Chippewa from CD 3 to CD 4. I have remitted in writing to the city manager, the formal protest of neighborhood residents to this proposal. And I'm speaking tonight to reaffirm our opposition in person. Should the commission vote tonight to move the case to public hearing? We intend to further address our concerns and case for opposition to the proposal at that time. It's my understanding that rezoning requests may not be approved without a public hearing. And that the intent of that policy places a value on the concerns and perspectives of neighborhood residents. With that in mind, we will assume that our comments will be heard and seriously considered by each of you. And that our comments will not only be made as a matter of formality on a proposal that has already been moved forward. And I hope that we find that to be true. Thank you.
I didn't hear that you said that that issue of number 14 was going to be held till the comments at the end, so. I'm Sally Rose. I live at 301 North Brown Street. Can you all hear me okay? Great. Which is the northwest corner of Brown and Chippewa. And I do wish to acknowledge the hard work that a commission has to sort through all of the pros and cons and the both sides of the coin for issues that affect many people. I'm speaking today because an obligation prevents me from being here on July 14th for a public hearing. And if I can zoom, I will certainly try and do that, but this is my shot. I oppose the rezoning proposal from Lapham Associates to build five fourplexes or 20 units with 40 plus parking spaces at 1104 East Chippewa based on the density it introduces to a stable neighborhood. Our neighborhood is quiet, maybe even a bit sleepy with mostly modest, single-family homes. I actually shudder to think about the new traffic pattern with 40 more drivers. I've lived at that residence for 30 years, and it's not an everyday occurrence, but certainly there have been accidents, people running the stop sign. And Brown Street is very busy and people use that instead of Mission if they're smart. I wish they weren't. Perhaps it's fortuitous that the Lapham family home is sitting on a piece of land that exceeds the norm. It seems like low-hanging fruit to go after any green space that doesn't already have structures on it without formal consideration of the impact on the existing community. Dave Lapham is a savvy landowner and landlord. In fact, I rented a small home from him myself. Of course, he would think it's a good idea to build as big as he can. When I bought and moved to the corner of Brown and Chippewa, it felt different. It wasn't renting, it was ownership. I experienced what homeownership is like over the years. I upgraded the home with new windows, new roof, new siding, a porch, and a few plantings. And I thank you for letting me have the flowers that are taller than 10 inches. Many of us in the community are enjoying flowers because of that. The zoning board seemed to stamp, rubber stamp what the director emphasized about the master plan. It's on us that we didn't track what was in the works, yes. But it's ultimately up to you, the city commissioners, to weigh the impact of rezoning in the long term, now that we are asking for your review of the situation. Please visit the site, take it out of the abstract, and see for yourself what the neighborhood looks like and how it functions. There's room to be creative with different housing than packing 40 plus people onto that lot that the rezoning would allow. Granted, we don't have bombs raining down on us, but we are talking about quality of life. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Smith, 2284 Sandstone Drive. I'm here to talk about item number 22, the central business district tax capture. I just want you to, you've seen the numbers many times. County operating is going to lose $120,898 annually. Commission on Aging, which serves our seniors, is going to lose $18,290 annually. Parks and Recreation, $6,402 annually. Medical care facility, $18,290. And I ride $15,766. You have every right, every legal right to establish tax capture district. I fully understand that. I think when we say these numbers out loud, it kind of puts some weight behind the impact. Everybody knows what the county's going through. Everybody knows that we're scratching for every dollar we can. And to have this hit is just coming at a very inopportune time. The first year on your project, you have infill development, site preparation, facade improvement, fire suppression, and housing incentive for a total of $500,000, which is basically your complete first year capture of $499,127. Going through years two through nine, you're going to have infrastructure debt service of $460,000 with $40,000 left over to replenish the incentive fund. Now, all this is perfectly legal, and I'm not saying that you can't. One thing that I would like to point out, two things, is these numbers right here are based on one year, and I'm sure when you get the final plan, there'll be a 10-year inflationary factor put into it. I conservatively put in two years of inflationary numbers, and at the end of 10 years, you'll be taking a total of $5,465,307. And that's just at a 2%, very conservative tax capture increase. What I would propose is that if you're going to go ahead with this, is would you entertain the idea of a partial capture? 75% instead of 100. That's, I'm not going to ask for zero, because I know that's probably unrealistic at that point, but that's something that we would like. At a 75% capture, you're still going to, over the 10 years, make $4,098,980. That'll be $418,980 more than what you had set aside for your bond payment. Now, I completely understand when you get into infrastructure, when you get into sidewalks and water mains. Now, I completely understand when you get into infrastructure, when you get into sidewalks and water mains and everything else that goes into downtown districts, I, I get it. And that's, this is a financing tool for those type of services that you need. But when we get into some of the other items, I would ask that you would look into the recently, MM Middle Michigan Development just received a trusted connector grant. It's a facade improvement for DDAs only. So I would ask that some, if you're looking for additional money, to look at that money there too, instead of just off tax captures. And so I just wanted to bring this all to your attention, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jim Marino. I live at, um, three sixteen South Arnold, Mount Pleasant. I'm here for a couple of different items. I really like the fact that you're, uh, doing a study on the Mount Pleasant landfill. I remember my father and I went there on Saturdays. He was a carpenter and we went there a lot. And I know that the county has a landfill too, and we're, we have to pay a lot of money just to keep it monitored all the time. But on that, that issue, uh, I have a suggestion. It's called bright fields, and that means when landfills are turned into solar farms. You know, I know you can't probably go down in this, because of what was in the dump, but, uh, you can go up. And, uh, I hope that's one of the things you consider. Also, I like Brian's plan about the, uh, partial tax incremental capture. As you went through those numbers, uh, you, and as you know, the county is having a kind of rough time at this time. It would be a crushing blow if you decided to do it. Obviously, you're entitled to do it, that's the way the law works. But I just want to say that if you did that partial one, we'd all bring each other up, the city and county, with the, with the, as a result of funding the programs that we have already. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Bachman. I live at eleven oh one East Chippewa Street here in Mount Pleasant. I'm talking about item fourteen to disapprove or speak my objection about the housing complex that's considered for rezoning. Um, I did some research before I came in today and speaking in behalf of my neighbor Dorothy, or kind of continuing her trend. We don't need more apartments in Mount Pleasant, in my opinion. Homeownership should be the goal. Considering the ACAP Housing Resource Guide and the United Apartments website, just those two, uh, sources, there's over thirty apartment complexes in Mount Pleasant. And making a few phone calls to Jamestown Apartments, Northwind Apartments, Timber Creek Apartments, and some others that I consider affordable, I feel safe saying that there is an S, safe estimate, five hundred to a thousand empty apartments every year. That's including during the school year as well, when CMU students are here. If we had an apartment shortage, I would see the need. On the contrary, I don't think we have enough homes to buy for individuals in particular that are affordable for, you know, a single person like me. I'm very blessed to be able to own my own home on Chippewa Street, and I'd like to keep it there. According to Zillow, in the entire Isabella County, not just the city of Mount Pleasant, there's a hundred and fifty-three homes for sale. That's it. In all of Isabella County, and just twenty-six of those homes are listed for less or around a hundred thousand dollars. And most of those homes come with a lot rent. You know, it's, you're not gonna be able to own the land that your home is actually on. And in Mount Pleasant, the city of Mount Pleasant, I found that there, according to Zillow, there are just four single-family homes for sale under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just four under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm all for affordable housing, affordable homeownership, but it seems like we have enough apartments in Mount Pleasant. And I think a better plan for that area would be to build a couple, three homes maybe, that families could live there as opposed to another housing complex, which we seem to have plenty of in this area. Thank you guys so much.
Hi. I wasn't sure if I was gonna speak tonight, but I did prepare a little something from you. I'm Amanda Break with the Mount Pleasant Housing Commission. I'm a Section Eight Coordinator, as well as a property manager for Pheasant Run Community. Uh, we house two hundred and thirteen families, all of whom rent. I think there are some real-life conversation points that are always missed when something like this is addressed in primary intellectually-focused manners. Folks often come onto their thoughts, um, with these additional rental buildings, with an emotional part in the conversation, which is often missed. It's important to note that studies show that approximately thirteen percent of those in favor never speak up in a formal setting, like a council meeting. So here I am advocating for those who often go unheard. The truth is, no one in poverty fights for their rights for anything, and this has been proven repeatedly by social scientists. We, the poor, are taught to keep our heads down, to be grateful for what is given to us, which is often crumbs. I am a little raw right now with all that is going on with the likelihood of the significant reduction in housing assistance funding. So I apologize if I have in any way a harsh tone at this time. But these are my thoughts on the development for eleven oh four East Chippewa. Smaller multi-family complexes are incredibly desirable, as are studio apartments. Much like the majority of our population, folks are often not too keen into being crammed into large complexes. Pheasant Run is a duplex town home village, or, um, neighborhood. And our families are usually thrilled to have so much personal space in comparison with the large complexes. Low-income families are used to one of two options. Rundown, single-family homes or mass apartment complexes. Both are difficult to raise a family and feel part of the overall community. While this is a single-bed proposal, it is important to note, with smaller units, the utilities are less of a burden, which is a plus for the majority of the clients I serve. When you say twenty units, it sounds like a lot. I think it's important to note that it's only five buildings in a neighborhood that already has multifamily living and business on all sides. I personally would love to see two beds, but you know, I'll continue asking for more all day, every day. Change is scary, but this isn't like plopping a ton of apartments in the middle of a neighborhood of single-family homes. I lived in a duplex in a neighborhood of single-family homes, and it was great. The opportunity to feel like a real part of the neighborhood is something that the girls, my girls, and I never took for granted and enjoyed very much. If we do not build small alternatives for seniors, we will continue to have an increase in housing shortages. Single or dual-person families are simply remaining in homes that could hold six to eight household members. Families will never have the chance to relocate here and give new blood to our communities. The population of elderly citizens occupying our single-family homes, from what I understand, is quite high. And while many of these folks are absolutely capable of maintaining a home on their own, many are not. And it is not out of disrespect, but rather respect, that we offer safe, affordable alternatives to their housing choices. We know that if we increase our population, we're focusing specifically here on procreation, for example. We need somewhere to put those folks. Stagnation in our housing stock isn't acceptable. I know I want my babies to have the opportunity to live as near as possible, and there is nowhere currently affordable for them to live. We need to make this personal. Where are your children and your grandchildren going to live? We work so hard to make Mount Pleasant an amazing city. Isn't that because we want our growing families to have somewhere to stay and to be part of this community we've built? This has to be personal, incentive for folks to look past the surface fear of change. When we say not in my backyard, we need to remember the alternative plan will have someone right behind them saying the same thing. Honoring NIMBYism would mean that we'd never get anything done. The great part about this proposal is you don't have to pretend there's something wonderful in it for them personally, because there is. This proposal is giving the community the opportunity to bring in attractive build, solve a piece of the puzzle that is our housing issue, and do it with a great landlord. Nationally, there is a push to restrict communities from being able to say no to anything with regards to building more housing. Here, in this community, we are building cautiously, with neighborhoods and current environments in mind. To pretend corporate greed is the focus of housing families, I believe is a disservice to the advancement of our community. The truth about cohabitation is in large part due to the fact that folks can't afford solo housing anymore.
Thank you, Amanda, your time has expired.
Oh, I'll be next time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give comments on agenda items at this time? Not seeing anyone stepping up. Is there any emails or letters?
There is one email from Andy Brockman, um, who is in support of fully funding the TIF district.
Jason, could you repeat that with a little closer?
Yeah, uh, email from Andy Brockman.
Thank you.
In support of the TIF, uh, fully funding that.
Thank you.
This is important, important, uh, for the revitalization of downtown.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No raised hands.
All right. At this time, I am going to close the public input on agenda items, and we'll move into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager desents.
Proceeding petitions and communications this evening includes the minutes of the planning commission regular meeting and work session from May twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Next item is to move on to the consent items. Manager desents, once again, if you would.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held June nine, twenty-twenty-five, approval of the minutes from the closed session held June nine, twenty-twenty-five, notice of temporary traffic control order number one, twenty-twenty-five, consider resolution in support of final approval of temporary traffic control order number two, twenty-twenty-five, consider approval of employee delegate for the municipal employees' retirement system annual meeting, consider an amendment to the chill furnace and water heater projects twenty-twenty-five contract to include a contingency of fifteen percent of the total contract amount. Consider awarding the contract for the twenty-twenty-six galvanized services replacement bid to Green Tech Systems for two hundred two thousand twelve dollars. Consider setting a public hearing for July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five to hold a public hearing to allow for public input and to consider the proposed changes to an adoption of Chapter seventy-two of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled "Bicycles and Electric Bicycles," regarding the usage of motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned trails. Set a public hearing on July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five for Z twenty-five zero-one, two-two-one West Michigan Great Lakes Bay Properties LLC. Request to rezone the properties from C D four general urban character district to C D five urban center character district. Set a public hearing for July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five for Z twenty-five zero-two, one-one-zero-four East Chippewa Street, Lapham Properties, or Lapham Associates. Request to rezone the property from C D three suburban character district to C D four general urban character district with the residential dwelling use-only special requirement. Set a public hearing on July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five for Z twenty-five zero-three Cross Lane Street, city of Mount Pleasant. Request to rezone the properties from C D three suburban character district to C D four general urban character district with the residential dwelling use-only special requirement. Set a public hearing on July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five for TC twenty-five zero-one, multiple buildings within the same lot, city of Mount Pleasant. A proposed tax change to table one-five-four-point-four-zero-five-A of the zoning ordinances to remove the one principal building per lot restriction within the C D four general urban character district. Consider approving contract with Fishbeck for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for professional services related to the island recharge stream restoration project, along with a budget amendment for the same. Consider approval of a resolution for Reynolds Gold Fine's CDBG revolving loan fund application to continue the loan process for the business, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you, Manager Desents. Are there any items in the consent agenda that the commission would like to move into the regular agenda? Not seen any? Was there any questions or discussion that we wanted to have before approving? And not seen any? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, so moved, so moved. Second.
No, okay. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. If you'd like to make a comment, Commissioner Zhang.
Uh, I want to make a, a comment about the consensus agenda items. Uh, we voted to approve them, and I voted with majority. It is proper to hold public hearings about important items and things that affect city residents. My comment is about the presentation of the facts by the city officials on items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. A primary rationale advocating for adoption of those changes was because of, quote, "the master plan calls for it." It is proper to defer the discussion about those proposed changes to the public hearing at subsequent deliberation by the commission. I merely want to point out the important, uh, the importance of the master plan argument when it comes to the proposals of the agenda items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen. It was not even mentioned in the consent item twelve, though the master plan is explicit on that topic. On item twelve. This is not the time to preemptively discuss the topics for the scheduled public hearing. Even when those public hearings are held, I will not argue the master plan is the deciding factor. It is not. It's merely a planning tool. The purpose for my comments today is to point out the inappropriate and biased way it is used. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Was there any other comments, um, at this time? Okay. Keep moving along. There are no public hearings this evening, which will bring us into new business. We'll start with item number twenty. Consider authorizing a contract extension with the Manic Smith Group for a not-to-exceed amount of forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to perform environmental consulting services, including the development of a conceptual site model and focused feasibility study at the former Mount Pleasant landfill. Manager Desents, if you would like to tee up the conversation.
Manic Smith Group has been the city's longstanding environmental advisor related to state and federal requirements at a former landfill site. Manic Smith Group proposes to prepare a conceptual site model to identify groundwater contamination exposure routes and a focused feasibility study to evaluate remedial options to prevent groundwater impacts from venting into the Chippewa River. A representative from the Manic Smith Group is here today to provide an overview of the proposal and to answer any questions that the city commission may have. Total cost for these services is not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'll note that funding for this contract extension has been allocated with twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars fifty cents provided by the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe Grant, and then the other half of that would be coming from the general fund.
We've got Charlie Bush here on Zoom, uh, from the Manic Smith Group. And Charlie, you should be able to unmute and, uh, turn on your video if you like.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate, uh, everybody letting me, uh, speak on, on this topic. What we have at the, uh, the former landfill is, uh, we've identified some areas of concern that we, uh, would like to address with, uh, some remedial activities. But before we do that, we have to figure out exactly, um, which remedial activities would be most effective and, uh, most appropriate for the areas of concern. That's in that proposal that we have. We anticipate, uh, the work to be conducted within two to three months, and we should be able to have a report, um, at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Is there any other comments at this time from staff before we begin discussion on the item? Question, so turning to the commission, questions on, on this item? Comments, concerns? It's been something we've been working on for quite a while, so I appreciate the work that staff has done and, um, Fishbeck Engineering has done. Let's see, and also, um, gotcha, um, and Manic Smith Group. It's very warm in here this afternoon. Anyway, um, I appreciate the work that y'all have been doing, um, to address this, has been a concern for a lot of us for a while, so. If there's no further, um, discussion, um, is there a motion to approve the contract from the commission?
I move we authorize a contract extension with the Manic Smith Group not to- I move we authorize a contract extension with the Manic Smith Group not to exceed the amount of forty one thousand five hundred twenty five dollars. To continue to perform environmental consulting services, including the development of a conceptual site model and focus feasibility study. At the former Mount Pleasant landfill. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion to approve the contract, um, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. That brings us to item number twenty one. Consider awarding the contract for the water treatment plant improvements to R C L Construction. For twelve million, two thousand nine hundred ten dollars and a budget amendment for the same. Looks like we have Director Moore stepping up for the presentation.
Yeah, I can go ahead and tee him up though.
Appreciate it.
He's just putting up a, a presentation here. But the city commission is asked to award the contract for the water treatment plant improvements. To R C L Construction of Sanford, Michigan for eleven million, three hundred twenty three thousand five hundred dollars. And a six percent contingency of six hundred seventy nine thousand four hundred ten dollars. And a total contract amount of twelve million, two thousand nine hundred ten dollars. This is being done as part of the first phase of such upgrades and is being paid for through the authorized bonding through the state of Michigan drinking water state revolving. Fund program of this total amount, the twelve million that I quoted. Two point two million will be awarded as part of the state's program authorizing principal loan forgiveness.
Just trying to get the, uh, correct, uh, presentation here. Remember what it was named? What I put there, fishback in the front of it.
Fishback.
Yeah. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties here. I think I got it, Brian. Yep. I apologize for that, but I'll hand this off to, uh, Brian Van Zee with, uh, Fishback Engineering.
Alright, thanks everybody for having me. Um, just here to give you a quick update on what was all included in this project. Does it extend? So a couple of items are included. Uh, the first one you'll see there is rehab of the aerator unit. That is the middle pitcher. And on the inside of that unit is a bunch of steel trays and with those little balls that you see. Um, and the whole purpose of that unit is to, um, remove dissolved gases that affect odor and color in your water. That unit will be completely, um, we're going to remove everything out of it, completely rehab it and put it back in service. So. And then the pitcher on your right is the recarbonation tank. Um, it really doesn't look much different from the outside. But that, again, will be completely rehabbed. And the purpose of that one is it balances the pH in your water and helps soften it. So. Another piece of the project is the, uh, filters, um, and they do just that. They filter your water. So. Um, we're going to completely remove, there's a bunch of different layers of sand media down in those tanks. So that will be completely replaced. Uh, there's under drains in there that are going to be replaced and the tanks themselves will be rehabbed. Um, all the piping on that left pitcher, uh, that piping on the top over the tanks, that's all going to be replaced, including the valves and. Controls with that, so. And then there's some other, um, around the plant, there's a lot of valves and flow meters that measure the water. All that equipment needs to be replaced. And then, um, replacement of all the main electrical gear. Uh, again, this plant was built in the mid nineties. Um, that doesn't sound very old, at least to me, but it's, um, you know, it's a good thirty years old. Everything's past its lifespan, so we're going to replace all the front end, uh, electrical gear. All the main controls, the transformers, the pitcher on your left is the old diesel generator that will be removed. And a new natural gas generator put in its place. Then, uh, all the SCADA controls, now that is the, the brains to the plant, right? It's the computer system that operates and helps control all these different processes. That'll be, um, upgraded and replaced. And then all of the HVAC equipment and humidifier. So with that plant with all that water in there is extremely humid. Um, and that unit on the right pitcher, or the far right pitcher, that doesn't look that bad, but that thing again is thirty years old. And it has failed several times and costs a lot of money to, to replay, uh, to, uh, repair it. So. And that's all the main items. If anybody's got any questions or.
Any questions from members of the commission?
Just a comment that we know we need this work done.
Yeah.
Commissioner Zane?
Al- also the comment that, uh, we're going to rely on expertise of Fishback and especially to the, uh, water department employees. Because while this is going on, we need to make sure we maintain water supply to the city and I know they'll do a good job at it.
Yeah, that was, um, a question, um, just during this, um, could you remind me the course, uh, the length of time? The like development, construction and developments are supposed to take. Obviously, this is a very lar- large project.
Yeah, so it, once everything is, contracts are signed, um, it probably won't start until late September, early October. Um, and then it is close to a two year project. So, um, to keep the plant running, like you said, um, we're going to have to do, do a piece at a time, right? And try to, there'll be some bypassing of the water to sit in to certain processes and we'll keep it going that way. Do it during low demand times, um, when you don't need the entire plant online. So.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. With that, um, is there further discussion from the commission? If not, be looking for a motion to approve or to award the contract.
That. I move that we award the contract for the water treatment plant improvements to. R C L Construction for, uh, twelve million and change and a budget amendment for the same. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor of awarding the contract, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. Thank you, guys. All right. At this time, we are moving on to item number twenty two. Consider proposal for renewal of central business district tax increment financing authority. Manager desents, walking up with the presentation.
Right. Good evening, everyone. So at our last meeting, uh, on this topic, so I think this is about a little over a month ago at this point. Uh, we had talked and the city commission wanted to see a proposal from staff on, uh, what we should consider doing with the central business district. Tax increment finance authority. So my outline for today essentially here, I'm just going to remind everyone what the TIF is, what it does, how it works and everything like that. Want to review the capture rate proposal and associated projects and programs. That's where our city engineer Stacy Torri is going to come in. She'll just kind of refresh everyone's memory. On the big downtown project that we're talking about doing and what these funds would do. And then, uh, lastly, I'll request authorization from the city commission to enact a proposal. So just to remind everyone, our central business district TIF was established in nineteen eighty four. It's been amended five times since then. The plan is currently set to expire at the end of the year. The district has had seen a zero capture rate since twenty nineteen. This was a conscious decision from the city at that time to cease the capture. The district is eligible to capture projects allowed per state law. Finances, the current taxable value is just under twenty five million dollars. Central business district capture value that actually could be captured is eighteen million. The base value or the twenty five percent of that value can't be captured because that was exempt from capture when it, that's essentially the value rate when it was established. Now we can seek to capture all of the, um, tax monies, uh, in value above that. The city capture then would be roughly three hundred thousand dollars. This is money otherwise finding its way into the general fund. Which would be funneled into the tax increment finance authority. County capture is about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Mid Michigan college is about twenty two thousand dollars for a total capture of right around five hundred thousand dollars. The proposal that I have for you this evening is a one hundred percent capture of eligible taxes for ten years. Again, there's the breakdown of where all of that money would come from. Proposal would be to utilize these funds to fund infrastructure and grant programs as outlined in this proposal. Um, we can also consider other sources of revenue such as marijuana funding. But in my proposal to the city commission, I'm proposing that we look at that as a source for other incentives. For, uh, instance, we've been talking a lot about housing and that could be cold hard cash that could help a development find its way to the city of Mount Pleasant. So that is my proposal in a nutshell. We'll be talking about these programs and projects here more in depth, the downtown infrastructure needs. I'm going to hand off to the city engineer to talk about those. I'll talk about a bit in, on incentives as well too. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our city engineer Stacy Torri.
Hi there. So, um, just a refresher, we took a look at what infrastructure projects that we could do downtown. The infrastructure we looked at was the streetscape, so it would be everything from the building faces to the curb. Um, anything in between the curbs would be projects we could fund in the future with Act fifty one funds, so those aren't considered as part of this. So we looked at replacement of all the hardscape sidewalks, trees, um, benches. And then, um, our electrical and irrigation systems. Right now, most of the irrigation systems, other than town center, of course, aren't working properly downtown or, or completely shut off. Because they're just so old at this point. Um, we did do an inventory of the existing light poles downtown and they are structurally sound. So instead of replacing those, which would be extremely expensive, we're looking at repainting those. Um, the street department did a few tests already on those and that came out pretty well, so that would be our plan for the light poles. Um, so we looked at what if we split this into two projects to do all of Broadway Street and to do all of Maine. And the approximate cost, it was one point one four million for Broadway from Oak to Lansing. And, um, Maine from the county building to Illinois is about one point six million. And then we also put together costs for replacing any sidewalk downtown that wasn't, was just plain five foot sidewalks. That has a, has a paser rating or poor condition for or less, and that was approximately seventy five thousand. And that would be within the downtown tax capture district. Um, and then another option we looked at was to provide fire suppression. And what this would include would be just running one fire suppression line for each block, both sides of the road. Which would take it from the center line to the building face and then allow the business owners from there to take it inside the buildings. But it wouldn't include any fire suppression work inside the buildings. So we estimate that based on recent prices we've seen at about fifty thousand. A lot of that cost has to do with tearing up the street and the sidewalk. Um, so thirteen of those is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we took a look at the downtown parking lots and how much money we would need to save every year just to do maintenance to keep those up. Um, this wouldn't include any major reconstruction projects. It would be crack seal, striping, um, future overlay projects. So we estimate about thirty six thousand dollars per year would be needed just to do our regular maintenance on our downtown parking lots. We do have two projects coming up in the C I P, um, currently for parking lot two and parking lot twelve for overlay projects. That aren't included in that. And I'm going to turn it back over to Aaron.
Right. This is just the summary sheet of what the city engineer was talking about. Our streetscape replacement projects, the fire suppression leads and then other sidewalk replacements as well, leading up to about three and a half million dollars total. Uh, incentive programs, I'll just highlight again very quickly, used to further development within the central business district. Were designed to increase taxable value with these and were designed to incent fire suppression in older buildings as well too. Uh, we'll talk about a few different ones. Infill development, this is the idea that developers could be attracted to various incentive packages. Including grants for new development or tax based incentives is the idea where individuals might utilize underutilized, uh, areas. Maybe parking areas, maybe just where we could fit some of these smaller buildings in there and put them in. So infill development might be, I think a lot of people have seen these where some stores are starting to locate in big box stores, parking lots, those kind of things. It's utilizing those, um, creative spaces to try to bring more value into that area. Site selection preparation, I've talked with the city commission about this one. I've shamelessly stolen this from the state of Michigan. And trying to do site analysis, R F P, R F Q development, site design, environmental assessment as well too. This is something that M E D C is starting to offer, um, and it seems to make a lot of sense. Again, these are all costs that would have to come out of the developer's pocket. And so them deploying their money is, um, you know, obviously there's a value there to them. If we could offer a little bit of money into that package, that might incent a developer to start looking at some sites here in the city. Facade grant program, our previous program was funded to allow for a seventy five hundred dollar, or a seventy five hundred dollar grant to be awarded to property owners. For facade improvements. Currently, the Mission Picker D D A has a similar program funded at sixty thousand dollars for interested applicants. That's not sixty thousand dollars for a property. They do it as ten thousand dollar grants, sixty thousand dollars total. Fire suppression grant program, our formal program is funded to allow for thirty five thousand dollars to be awarded to a property owner for adding fire suppression to their property. And then, uh, housing incentive grant, this is something that I'm proposing that is a little bit new and I'll talk about the breakdown of this as well too. But it'll be a new program designed to encouraging housing development in the city's downtown. Hundred fifty thousand dollars could be used to encourage new development or remodeling of outdated units in the central dis- business district. So I just kind of list here the assumptions that I've come up with just based on other programs and those kind of things. Um, what you'll notice though is I did move up facade improvement to saying let's do twenty thousand dollars, uh, per property. That could be a way of looking at this. Um, and so on this next slide here, I just show infill development allowing a hundred thousand dollar total. Set aside for two a project, for two projects and real, oh, and I'm sorry. And then allow the reallocation of those funds if not used within the first five years. So that would just say, we're going to put this aside for anyone who wants to do infill, but after five years of no one wants to infill, let's just go and pull the plug on that program. Let's look to put that money into the community another way. Site preparation, sixty thousand dollars for three properties. We're assuming about twenty thousand dollars in total cost. Facade improvement, a hundred twenty thousand dollars set aside for six properties to utilize up to twenty thousand dollars each. Fire suppression, we, uh, estimated this for two properties at seventy thousand dollars. This was one that was less used over time, which is why we determined maybe it just doesn't need as much funding. Um, I think there's also, if we move forward with the streetscape project, um, as proposed as well too. As you saw, there's fire leads that come closer to the property than what's currently there. The thirty five thousand dollars per property was assessed with the fire, with the, uh, water main in the road. And so you've just got further to get, uh, into that main by bringing the lines closer to the property. Folks are able to tie into it in a much, uh, cheaper rate. And then also trying to develop a housing incentive at a hundred and fifty. And then also trying to develop a housing incentive at $150,000. I think some of the details of that plan would have to be worked out in the actual plan itself. But this gives a total for incentives of $500,000, a nice round number. And this is why I had proposed it exactly in this way. The proposal would be to begin capture in 2026 and assign all of the $2026, which is about $500,000 to fund the new incentive programs as the taxes are captured in the summer and winter. So as soon as those funds become available, once we've collected those dollars, we've set it aside for the CD, for the Central Business District. We would open those programs up for applications. Then in 2026, we'd also design our streetscape project and then proceed through the bonding process and then begin the streetscape project in 2027 with the remainder of the 10 years in the plan as paying off the debt for that streetscape project. Again, 100% capture at $500,000 a year. I'm estimating the infrastructure debt service to be about $460,000 in need for about eight years, which then allows the incentive fund replenishment at a rate of about $40,000 per year. Other things we can do with $40,000 per year, as the city's engineer had pointed out as well, too. We could also allocate that money if we didn't need it for incentive programs, we could allocate it towards our parking lot maintenance as well. So the question before the city commission tonight is to capture or not to capture? Tax capture in the district results in the loss of the city's general fund. However, the need for funding would otherwise come from the general fund anyway. If you said, all right, manager descents, we don't want to capture the fund or the money or anything like that, I would say that's fine. We're still going to have to come up with the money for it and we'll still have to pull it from the general fund. The same also applies to capture from Isabella County, obviously. However, there's little value in capturing from the city only. And thus why a part of this proposal is to capture the county's dollars is because we can leverage those for the value that we're trying to create in our downtown space. I guess, and I just kind of put these out here for things for the city commission to think about. Does the city commission see greater value in the services being proposed in this presentation or in the services that funding would otherwise support, which would be general fund support, county services, those kinds of things? I do want you to keep in mind that the city generates a total capture for the county of 4.85 million dollars in revenue from the city taxpayers. $180,000, which is the CBD proposed capture, represents 3.7% of the total, the county's total capture rate from the city. I also want you to keep in mind too, that again, 25% of the value is not subject to capture. So 25% of the value of the Central Business District would still be captured and go to the county as well as the city. Also, a bit of a windfall for the county, they've received about $750,000 in marijuana tax money during its last fiscal year due to the city opting in to allow those types of businesses. So the city certainly is putting into the county's coffers. Timing to create this plan update becomes a little bit of an issue the longer we wait. And so I usually, I don't like putting the city commission into a spot, say, hey, we need to make a decision. But we're getting to that point where we're going to have to make a decision because if we don't make a decision soon, time is going to run out on this. We wouldn't make our December 31st deadline. If we don't make our December 31st deadline, then the plan expires. Other, other taxing jurisdictions could opt out entirely if they wanted to. And so that's the problem there. So. Proposed action direction, again, I'm asking for a motion direct staff to develop a CBD Tifa renewal as outlined in this proposal. Now I got to make sure the city commission understands there's still another process ahead of us. These presentations and all this discussion has been sort of what ifs and what we would do if we're going to move forward with a plan. But before putting all the work into redrafting the plan, going through public hearings, notices, because all of those things would be part of this. There'd be a public hearing. There's still more discussion to be had on it before the final adoption of the plan. But again, what I'm asking for under the city commission is a motion to move forward with this. If not, and I certainly understand it because there's a value judgment to be made there. It's, do we want the money in the Central Business District or do we feel that the money should go to those other taxing jurisdictions? My only question to the city commission then at that point would be, why continue the Tifa at that rate? If, if we're going to say that we're not going to capture anyone else's money and it's only going to be the city's money, I would say that in that instance, perhaps it does make sense to allow the Tifa to expire if we're just not going to utilize it for its intended purposes and we're just going to pull the money out of the general fund to do these projects. So with that, I leave it to the city commission. I'm also here for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, manager descents for the very informative and I appreciate all the options you're laying out for us as the commission. Looking to my fellow commissioners, questions at this time for manager descents, Commissioner Al Sager?
I, I understand all the projects and, and the way the money could be spent, but I really don't like the idea of the 100% capture because it impacts everybody. You know, I take advantage of services at the commission on aging, et cetera. So I would suggest a lower amount, but to still keep it and still capture some money.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Sager. Commissioner Zhang?
It's been, it's been suggested we're capture 100% for 10 years. Reasons for this decision were proposed downtown infrastructure project, which is where the majority of it seemed like it went to. And then the various incentives for businesses, and that's important. I'll tell my fellow commissioners why I don't like the proposed Tifa. Let me explain. Number one, we can't afford it. We cannot take so much tax money from the city. The tax money will be prioritized by Tifa board and elected officials. This is a lot of money to be taken from revenue from the city for 10 years, millions of dollars. The county cannot afford it. Tifa captures county money too. Few meetings ago, including tonight, we heard some from some county people. And they explained the impact it would have on them. The request is, the request was not to do this to the county. This money affects every township in the county. Certainly they were, they recognized why there's an advantage to the city to take county money. And it was almost like a plea, like, oh, if you have to take some, don't take it all. But I would say, I question, let me, let me continue. The Tifa also takes money from programs the city residents voted for, such as the, the county I Ride, Commission on Aging and others. People wanted these programs, but by our action tonight, we're going to decide we're going to take money from those things that people voted for and put it into this Tifa. Now there's a Tifa in place now. It's been started back in 1984. The money from that Tifa was collected and spent. The plan as I see it, the proposed plan is to ask us again to fund the old tax increment from the start without justification for adding new tax value. As I said in the beginning, I know it's important to downtown businesses and therefore it's important to the city. I want to help the CBD, but I'm concerned that it's, we cannot afford this plan. I suggest we keep the Tifa, but fund it from the city's general fund as money is available. Right now, that does not look promising. We, the city commission, were reminded of that recently when we recently approved the CIP. It too is underfunded. I do not know the true condition of the budget as this budget has not been, audit on this budget has not yet been completed. We can vote to keep the Tifa. And at the very worst, we should lower that money. And I would say right now, we should just keep the Tifa alive until we figure out our finances, get the audit of the budget, look at where we stand. It would be irresponsible to bring on future debt because remember, this is 10 years that we're taking away this money. And we can see from that presentation, that's a lot. We need to look out for these downtown businesses, but we can only do what we can afford. And right now, I'm telling you, we cannot afford this.
Other members of the commission, Commissioner Pirscher.
I understand the concerns about capturing funds from other areas. My question to manager descents is, we can't keep the Tifa open if we're not capturing.
We can keep it open, but there's just the logical question of why. And it's just, yeah, why would, why would we continue to keep open a tax capture district if we're not capturing? If you haven't captured anything since 2019, that's already been six years. Keeping it open for years longer, to be honest, there's reporting requirements and this is work for staff. It's nothing that we can't work through or anything like that. But I would just question why then dedicate work from staff to filling out reports to the state when we could be generating other value to the taxpayers?
Okay. Also, if we don't capture through a Tifa and we decide to do some of these projects anyways, they come from tax money that is brought in regardless from into our general fund.
That's correct.
So explain to me, as if I'm five, when we capture funds, where does, what does that mean to capture tax funds or capture funds?
From the Tifa's perspective or just from a, okay, yeah, from the Tifa's perspective. So what's going to happen, just the, the city treasurer is going to go and they're going to collect the taxes and they're going to have to go through a distribution. And they will then distribute that money to the Tifa in this case. So it would, rather than the money, as I said, going to the county, going to the city, that money, that $500,000 a year goes to the Tifa board. This is exactly what's happening with our Mission Picker Tifa as well, too. And it was one that the city commission wanted to move forward on and that the money doesn't go to us, it'll go to them. And they have full authority to spend that within the, pretty much what their plan says and everything like that. So that's, I hope I answered that question appropriately.
So what I'm understanding is that it was taxes that is normally paid in through our property tax.
Correct.
And instead of going out to other projects or other areas like mid Michigan college and the county and ourself, the city, it would go into a pot or into a bucket for Tifa. And then Tifa would pull out of that bucket to do like helping the businesses downtown and doing the, the large work of the fire suppression, putting that in so businesses can hook to it. Giving incentives possibly to homeowners and things like that in the downtown area.
That's correct.
Okay.
I asked for clarification on one of those things.
Certainly, Commissioner Zhang?
Clarification on, Commissioner Amy Pirscher. She, she inquired about that money was set aside and it goes to the Tifa board. Now, does, do elected officials control that money? Do we, can we veto some of that or can we say, yes, here's what we'd like? Or is that controlled by somebody else?
There's a couple of methods of control. I think what you're talking about, you've, you've got two methods there. One is the Tifa board itself, which is not elected. It's an appointed body. I, I know, yeah, you've been along, as long as that Tifa's been around. So, so it would be an appointed body. Some of those different taxing authorities do have representation on that body. For instance, the Mission Picker DDA has representation from the city. It's got representation from the county. So there's certainly a say that goes into it from those organizations as well. But let's say more importantly, the plan that you developed for your Tifa board lays out what they can and cannot do. So if the plan for the Tifa board was written in such a way to say, we're going to do these things and this is what we want to do, that's what's approved in your Tifa plan. The Tifa board couldn't say, you know, that was, that's really cool, but we're going to build a water park. They, they don't have that sort of authority.
And there's also a city commissioner that is appointed to the Tifa board, yes?
Correct.
Yeah. And yeah, to comment on that, I believe currently a county, a member of the county board commissioners and I believe actually Commissioner Bush, I believe you're currently appointed to the Tifa board as for this year. Not a whole lot of activity going on because that hasn't been funded, but Commissioner Pirscher is correct there.
So by by setting a capture, we're saying some of the money that we would normally give out or would be out to these other entities is going to come into the downtown area. But it's only downtown capture.
Correct.
It's not citywide capture.
That's a correct statement.
Okay. So it's downtown businesses, downtown residents. And part of the money that would normally go to county or to mid Michigan college or to the city itself, to its general fund bucket, is they're paying it, not the entire city.
That is correct.
Okay.
Other members of the commission, Commissioner Bush, Commissioner Rollins? Any questions or comments as we're having this discussion? Yeah, yeah, talking for a moment. Yeah. Essentially, this would result in no increase in taxes to any of the taxpayers. No one was paying more taxes because of this.
Correct.
The fund, the city funds that would be captured by this normally would go to the general fund, which is very flexible because we can do anything we want with it. So by putting them towards the Tifa fund, the drawback to it is that they're less flexible. They have a much more dedicated purpose. So we can, there's less we can do with it. But we, the benefit is we can capture more funds because we're bringing in county funds, we're bringing in mid Michigan college was the other large one. I can't remember the, I think you had a third one on. Well, yeah, city, yeah, mid Michigan and county.
I Ride.
I, I read what I think was included in the county.
In counties, figures.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner.
You said that there's no increase for taxpayers.
So if you wanted to argue, I suppose that the county, if they needed to raise taxes to then cover additional costs, that's would increase. But the actual dollar amount stemming from this, yeah, wouldn't increase at all. It's just moves around where the tax dollars end up at this point.
At this point, which is the point I was bringing up. When we're going to take out this many millions of dollars out of the general fund, out of the general fund of the city, out of the county, out of all those other entities, that impact over 10 years changes the likelihood of the need for tax. That is important. Our ability to afford things is affected by this. That's what's important for us to look at now.
Commissioner Bush?
Has staff done the type of projections that Commissioner Zhang is concerned about? I mean, cause I, I do see the risks in, you know, setting that decision right now for 10 years, knowing that you know, things are so uncertain. And I, I do think that the city often bears the brunt of the cost of things, you know, on a larger scale. I mean, the very next item in the, in the agenda refers to, you know, the county at large voting against something that benefits the county. And so now they're going to have to go to the city to pay for it. So I, I do think to a certain extent, I mean, this is what happens when the county at large votes against things that are beneficial to the county. The city has remained fiscally sound and the city has remained, you know, funding programs and services for our community. And, and I, I, I understand Commissioner Zhang's concern. But what projections for the next, you know, 10 years have we talked about for whether or not this is going to, you know, put us at more of a risk?
Yeah, if I can, to answer that question, I know I've, I've discussed with the city commission before, internal and external forward projections for the city's finances related to the general fund. And the initial belief internally is that the city was going to see a structural deficit somewhere around 2028. The external view of that is pushing it back to 2034. Now again, that is without any sort of an intervention with no, that's, we're just going to continue doing things the way that we're doing. We know that that can't be done. And so ultimately Commissioner Zhang is correct in that statement. But my challenge to that idea then is we clearly have $35 million in infrastructure needs in the downtown. And then how to pay for that, whether we tie that up in a bond with the Tifa capture. And at least that way you've got $180,000 each year helping to pay for the bond for that. Otherwise, it's just going to be the cities to pay for this bill. And so it'll be 300,000 or more of the city's coffers, $500,000 of general fund dollars going to this three and a half million dollar bill. So that's ultimately, that is what drove my desire to come before the city commission to make this proposal. And it's just, we know we have to do this anyway. We may as well leverage all of the funds we can possibly leverage in order to take care of the infrastructure need.
These are costs that we're going to incur no matter what.
You know, or, or you kick the, I mean, I'll just be honest, or you kick the can down the road. Or it's okay, we don't do streetscape replacement project one or two. We don't do fire suppression leads. We can still afford the sidewalk at $75,000. That's not going to be a major problem. But you know, the majority of this project, again, that's kick it down the road or utilize city dollars only for it or leverage our ability, which we have a complete legal right to do, to bring those, that money into the Tifa district and utilize it. to bring those, that money into the TIFA district and utilize it for this purpose.
Yeah. Commissioner Al Sager, did I see your hand raised?
Yeah. Um, I think my proposal would be to do a 50% capture. And that would be that we could do some things at a slower rate.
Be directing staff to, um, uh, develop a plan, like, again, prioritize items and develop a plan around a 50% capture for the district.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Comment?
Yeah, certainly.
Uh, certainly, in those presentation, they talked about the first 500,000. That, most of that money was gonna help the downtown businesses, which is, would be my priority, is to figure out how we can help downtown businesses without such a negative impact on the city and county finance. I would, I would make a motion that we continue the TIFA, uh, with, without a set, uh, capture rate and fund it as we can afford it. We're gonna know, certainly, if he talked about, well, we put off our, our, the point in time where we're gonna be out of money from 28 to 34, that's still within 10 years. So, we need to think enough ahead to say, let's don't do this. Let's continue to make the plan. Let's figure out how we can help these downtown businesses, but not has the negative impact on the finance of the city. So, my motion would be to, uh, re-initiate the TIFA, hold off on its funding, which would be funded, uh, from the general fund as we can afford it.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second for that? Not seeing a second at this time, the motion would fail. Let's see, Commissioner Bush?
If we set something in place for 10 years. Oh, sorry. If we set something in place for 10 years and then, you know, two years from now, something, right? I don't wanna say it because then it'll happen. Um, and we have to reevaluate, what is our legal right at that point?
Mm-hmm. One of the issues would be is if we move forward with the bond proposal, if it's already committed to a debt service, obviously, that bill's gotta get paid by some means. So, we would have to make sure that, one, the bond is getting paid off. Um, you know, giving us two years from now, though, at least we would have a firmer picture. So, we would go into that, 'cause the idea would be we would go through, let's say, the, uh, design and bonding process in 2026 before shovels hit the ground if we saw something. There's at least some method of pulling back at that point. But once we've signed onto the bonds and once we've started to deploy a construction crew and we're going out there, we've signed a contract, the, uh, horse is out of the gate at that point.
Okay, I, I, I'm talking about over the course of 10 years.
Yeah, the course of 10 years. Uh, the main issue would just be the bonding. So, a, at that point, if you're already committed to a bond, you're gonna have to continue to pay those bills by, by some means.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and Commissioner Bush, into that, we've, we've said, at least in this plan, that we're gonna do this infrastructure and then bond it. So, we have to be careful about what we've committed to.
Commissioner Rollins?
I, I think one thing that we're not considering, and in this case, what happens when we defer things, it's the cost of inflation. These numbers are gonna change. We have no idea what the actual numbers are gonna be and most likely they're going to increase. So, I think we need to take action now rather than kick the can down the road and then we're looking at a whole new set of numbers when we actually get to it. We don't know what percentage of inflation's gonna be by the time we get down 10, five, 10 years down the, down the road and what our intake of taxation's gonna be. So, I think we need to act sooner rather than later, basically.
Gotcha. Um, there was a discussion, as far as working on this, um, there was discussion on a 50% from Commissioner Al Sager to address concerns over, um, community partners. It sounds like there was some back and forth within the commission on that. Um, is there anyone else who has a preference to a difference, um, to a different dollar percentage that they'd like to discuss before a motion is made? If there's any kind of discussion that'd be had on a specific percentage? I think the commission has indicated we would like to fund it, but.
I am leaning, I mean, I was leaning towards 100%, just because of a lot of the circumstances at play here, but I would, I would be interested in 75%.
Gotcha. Let's see.
I, I think too, the, the time, you know, uh, inflation happens in 10 years. A lot of things happen in 10 years. So, it doesn't have to be 10 years. It doesn't have to be 75 or 50. So, that should be a consideration. And, uh, to Commissioner's point on, you know, things are changing, inflation can happen, we should also recognize, uh, the trend at CMU, the, the trend in population of our city and the tax base. So, uh, those millions of dollars are gonna be important in two, three, five years from now.
All right. Um, for myself, um, I think that, um, the downtown, um, district is a really valuable place to invest. It's a major economic driver for our city and for the community at large. We're one of the largest, we are the largest population center in Isabella County. Um, to the North Clare and to East Midland, I hear all the time about people, the investments going into their downtown areas, that people come to us and like complain, well, why isn't Mount Pleasant doing more? Um, we may, I think, um, this would be a really great way to encourage development. Um, I lean towards, again, presentation that we're receiving, um, I'd be, I was, um, generally in favor of 100% capture. But if there's interest in, again, like, toning that down, I'd be interested in doing a 75% capture. That's something I think, again, a community partner who's affected, come forward and put forward that as a bit of a compromise number there. I think that, um, could be allowable. But putting, uh, putting to the commission, is there additional motions on this? Anyone interested in making a motion on it?
Have, have we thought about, um, you know, like, 100% but for five years? Like, how does that change the equation? Like, how does that type of?
Yeah, part of the major issue is what is our total debt service load going to be? And so, again, um, bringing it back to right here on this slide, um, even going at eight years for a three and a half million dollar, uh, project, I'm estimating, you know, $460,000 for eight years in order to pay that. So, as we start dwindling that down, there's the potential for the effect on the scope of the project. Uh, so that could happen. If we go 50%, then maybe we're doing streetscape project one and not two.
Yeah. Um, question I have for you, is there, um, just in your expertise experience, um, is there a realistic way to just bank the funds, save up without entering into debt service to perform some of the work that we're doing here?
That's another way of doing it as well, too. So, it could be a pay-go. So, what you could do is you could bank up the money and then spend it as you have it. So, you could always break down streetscape one and streetscape two into the two different components, the total three and a half million dollars now and a $2 million and a one and a half million dollar project. And then from there, you could, uh, you know, save up four years, do one of them, save up for three years after that, do another one. That is another way of doing it.
Gotcha. So, perhaps if we did 100% capture even without debt service, that then gives us more flexibility? Um, or even 75%? Thoughts on that with the commission of, we're going?
I do, I do just wanna make sure, the city's engineer is here.
Yes.
Uh, I think she wants to say something. And I can't figure out what the, what the signals I was getting were.
We welcome expertise, thank you, Stacey.
Right, um, and the way that we estimated it is if you were gonna do all of Broadway or all of Main Street, but we could do it block by block. Um, it's not that it's an imminent failure today that people can't walk down. There are some pretty bad areas and the electrical and irrigation needs work, but we don't have to do it all at once. We can do it in pieces. Um, it's more economical in terms of the contractor and mobilization or thing to do larger sections at once, but it is possible to do it as, as we go along. And keep in mind too, the fire suppression is probably on that borderline of want and need. Um, obviously, it would be nice to have fire suppression available for all those businesses, but that's, that's a $650,000 item, too. So, that's something to consider, but.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Um, one thing I would like to remind the commission is that this has been brought to us because this was brought to us before and we said we wanted this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, knowing everything that we know today, we knew then as well, 'cause I remember asking this same questions to explain it to me as a five-year-old, how this all works and what this all means. I know that many are concerned about, um, the county's finances. I understand that. I understand that completely. Um, it is, it's horrible that the county has ended up in the space that they are. And Brian, I have nothing against you and I know that you're doing the best you possibly can to make sure that you guys get everything back into order, right? But as the city, we have many people asking us to move forward with progress.
And in order to move forward with progress, we need to be able to support what we have here, build what we have here, so others will want to come here. And when it comes to, um, the reduction in CMU's student, um, body, it is actually starting to go up. Every time we are able to bring into our, um, into our city progress, anytime we're able to bring new businesses in, we have more people coming to the Cindy, city, spending their money, maybe moving here. Yes, we don't have a whole lot of houses for sale. And I gotta tell you, that's a, that's a good thing because that means people are staying here. That means people are trying to make their space here. And I, I appreciate that. Every time I see a, a house across my street go for sale, which in the last couple of years, I've had some of those, but they've all been rental units and they've all sold to single families. So, I've always enjoyed the fact that we can, from this, from the dais, push for progress in this city and make this city better and better. But please remember, we have this proposal because we all asked for this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Perschbacher. Um, is there a motion from any of the members of the commission? Let's see. Commissioner Al Sager?
I think since I've heard other commissioners mention a 75% capture, I think I'll make the motion to have a 75% capture and still for 10 years for the TIFA, down, for the downtown TIFA.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any final comments on this from members of the commission before we move ahead with the vote?
Can, can we have concurrent motions or no?
Hmm.
Not with?
Uh, no, once a motion is on the table and seconded, it must be dealt with.
Okay.
Um, there could always be an amendment, too, but, uh, not a concurrent main motion, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Was there, Commissioner Perschbacher?
Um, though I would prefer 100% capture, I am willing to do a 75 if that is what the majority of the commission would like to do. Though, just remember that re, that makes our capture smaller, which means there's going to be less funds to do the things that we have been proposed.
Gotcha. Other members?
I would be open to considering an 100% capture as well. So, that's why I wanted to kinda have a, we have not discussed that yet.
Okay. Commissioner Nuzein? Any comment?
I think the public is watching us. They're watching our, our fiscal responsibility, so we'll vote.
Commissioner Rollins?
Oh, good.
Now, come. Commissioner Al Sager, you made the motion, any final comments or anything?
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. In that case, um, let's see, all those in favor of the motion, um, would be?
I approve roll call vote.
Certainly, we can do a roll call vote, it's been asked for. Yeah. Um, I'll say yes, um, without getting into my sheet here on parliamentary procedure, we'll just move ahead with a roll call vote when it comes to it. Um, those in favor of the motion will indicate, yeah, when called upon, will indicate by saying aye. Um.
Can you repeat what the motion is that we're voting on?
That's, yep, where I was building towards there. So, the motion would be for a 75% capture, um, for, for a 10-year term. Um, so, those in favor of the motion would be in favor of a 75% capture for a 10-year term. Um, clerk Wixson, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Zhang?
No.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty. All righty, that concludes item 22. Um, thank you, commission, that was a lengthy discussion and there's always information to consider. And oftentimes, we can't have these conversations except for in, in the commission chambers during a meeting. So, I appreciate, um, the lengthy and I think constructive conversation there. Um, let's see, then it takes us to item number 23. Um, consider police services agreement between the city of Mount Pleasant and the village of Lake Isabella. Manager Descent, if you'd like to tee us up here.
The city commission is asked to consider a contract for police services with the village of Lake Isabella. Flat rate of $250 per hour would be charged, which covers the city's total costs as well as a small overhead percentage. The city would work out a schedule with the village and ensure that enough coverage will always be available here in Mount Pleasant before considering services in the village. Director of Public Safety Paul Loria has provided the attached memo that is in your packet, um, on this. And he's also here to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Bush?
I think I may have asked this question another time when something similar came up. Um, I am curious how, um, you know, any insurance issues at play here?
We're both insured by the same carrier, uh, Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. Um, so, there's, there's no insurance risk, um, at all. I, I mean, they chuckled when I asked them, they said, are we gonna argue with ourselves? I, I said, I just wanted to check. So, there's no insurance issue.
Okay. Other questions from the commission? Comments? Not seen any. One thing that came up, uh, came to my mind, um, and I just wanted to kinda get your, your, um, thoughts on this, Director Loria. Um, why Lake Isabella? Obviously, they came to us and they had a program, uh, had an agreement, I believe, already with the sheriff for like a similar program to make sure that there was dedicated patrols out there. Um, that's at least my understanding, I could be wrong. Um, but other townships, if they come for, uh, uh, like have similar requests in the future, say Wise Township decides that they want, wanna reach out to us. Your thoughts on?
Well, I, I can only, I can only staff and, uh, do so much.
Yeah.
Um, and whoever, you know, whoever's first in line, Lake Isabella's first in line. Um, if this goes through, we're gonna provide them with fantastic service, um, uh, and product. And, uh, if another township or something comes through, I mean, we can certainly look at that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn it away, but there'll have to be some analysis on manpower and, and, uh, what their, uh, expectations are at level of service and whatnot.
Yeah. So. If I can build off my question there, I appreciate that response there because, again, it was, that was something, again, like, you know, if other people start coming, it's the question of how do we handle that? And I think, um, looking at being realistic with what our manpower is, what, um, our ability to, um, provide services, I think that, again, analysis in the future is the important thing there. We can't infinitely, um, cover the county or anything, but Lake Isabella had the very specific ask and the very specific request already in place there. So, that's just what I wanted to go back to.
Yeah, and, and you're also, um, you have to remember the way we're scheduled, the way our, uh, department or the manpower is scheduled, half the department is off at any given time. So, at, at, in the first half of the week, half the department's off. And then in the second half of the week, the first half of the week, half the department's off. So, that schedule, um, alleviates or, uh, solves the issue of having to add additional staff in this case. Now, Lake Isabella is not a hotbed of criminal activity and in-depth, um, investigations that are, you know, that are off the rails here. If, if, if it was high crime area, uh, and w- w- we have to staff it with, uh, you know, four people, ju, it, it's a different, it's a different animal altogether. Uh, but given their, uh, given their situation. it is, it is easy to accommodate them with the current staff that we have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bush?
I apologize if I missed this in the, in the packet and the proposal, but I saw a future agreed upon date, but I did not see a date. But, uh, is there a, a contract length or is it just termination 30 days?
Yeah, we, we, uh, there's those provisions, exactly as you said, uh, termination by either party. Uh, but we also have to, uh, get this board's approval first and then we move on to the village of Lake Isabella's board. Um, and then they will say, uh, we want to start X or when can you start? And, um, we're, we're ready to go.
Commissioner Zhang?
It's ironic, we just passed a motion to cut county funding, you know, tax revenue. And now we're discussing city services to out-county communities. The 2025 budget for public safety, uh, or the public, the 2025 budget has $18.9 million in revenue and $19.1 million in total expenditures, uh, for the general fund. Public safety accounts for 49% of the general fund expenditures. Mount Pleasant residents cover the $9.3 million it takes to fund the, the police and safety division. The Mount Pleasant residents tax themselves accordingly. More people in Mount Pleasant vote to provide sheriff patrol for the county than Lake Isabella residents. Even though the additional tax city residents would have to pay did not directly benefit them because they already have the city police department. Uh, staff can arrange, the, the city staff can arrange so that there's police staff, equipment, administration to meet the Isabella contract criteria and even charge $250 per hour. That's not the point. This contract will help Isabella residents. This move will not be in the best interests of Mount Pleasant residents. For that reason, I'll be voting against it.
Commissioner Burschbacher?
I know that we just voted to do a 75% capture. Um, and it does seem like we are pulling funds away from the county, but we also have to remember that the county also benefits from our cannabis dispensaries that we have here and they are getting funding for that. The reason why, um, I'm going to support this is because the city, though we seem to be an island in the middle of this county, we are not unto ourselves. And what, what would cause us harm to help our neighbor? We're not saying that we're putting somebody in, um, the village of Isabella, Lake Isabella 24/7. We're saying that they will go out there periodically. They will go out for certain events when there are more people out there. The state police will still be the ones that will be doing any investigations, any, um, issues when we are not there. It's not like we're saying that we're always going to be there. This is not done free of charge. It's $250 an hour, that covers the cost of the officer. It covers the cost of the equipment and it covers the insurance or any liability that we pay. We are doing this because they reached out and they said, we need some help once in a while, something that the state police cannot always do. And I see nothing wrong with doing that. We should always be, just like with the Tifa, trying to help our businesses grow, trying to improve our space. We should also be helping our neighbors that are out in the county. And if another township or another village were to contact us, we would obviously look at that as well and say, what can we do here? I certainly hope that, um, the issues that the county has had can be resolved soon and that they can get their patrol back. But also remember, um, they're not required by the state, by the law, to have county patrol. They, the county chose not to have that for whatever reason. Um, I think there was a lot of misinformation, but I also think that there was a lot of frustration with some of the things that had happened. But I think that, you know, by supporting this, we are telling the county as a whole, because we are the county seat, that we are willing to help when we can, but we're not going to push ourselves over the limit, but we are willing to help when we can.
Commissioner Bush?
I also think it sets the example of services are paid for. Like Commissioner Burschbacher said, this is not done for free. When townships, uh, other municipalities in the county need services, services are paid for and that's how this happens. If it's not being paid for by taxes, this is how it's being paid for right now.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I just want to make clear to the public that if I thought I was putting any, uh, city resident, visitor, business, or the city in jeopardy in any way that impacts response, service, crime solvability, I wouldn't be for this, um, at all. I would not do that. My priority lies with the city. Manager Wolf from Lake Isabella understands that. He, he, he's the one that, you know, said, I would expect, yet your priority is the city. And if you can't meet our need, for whatever reason, we understand. So thi- this is, um, this has been, th- these expectations have been discussed. And I'm not willing to risk any part of that, uh, to a city resident or a city taxpayer, for that matter.
Thank you, Director Loria. Not seen any other comments or questions or items of discussion on this, um, is there a motion? Commissioner Burschbacher?
I motion that the city commission approve the, uh, police services agreement between the city of Mount Pleasant and the vis, village of Lake Isabella.
Second.
Heard Rollins first, um, on that one. All right, the motion is to approve the contract as presented, um, between the city of Mount Pleasant and the village of Lake Isabella for police services. Those in favor of the contract and the motion, or would be in favor of the motion, um, would indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's see, all right, that brings us to the end of new business. We are now on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. As part, yeah, when I come to speak, thank you, uh, thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Um, let's see, Commissioner Alziger?
I, I just have a reminder, um, as city residents, many of us have contracted with Granger for our, uh, recycling and our waste services. And the waste service is picked up every week and the recycling is picked up every other week. And this is a pickup for recycling week. So I have it on my calendar for Thursday, recycling this Thursday, but then every other week. So I just, I drive by a lot of, um, houses that seem to put it out every week for the recycling. That's why I said that.
Thank you, Commissioner Alziger.
If you're, if you're unsure, you can always call it Granger or you can, um, go on your, onto your portal and it will tell you when your recycling is out.
Uh, Commissioner Bush?
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Burschbacher?
Um, I want to, um, I'm sure everybody knows that it is hot as Hades outside. Um, and that, that means that there are, um, a lot of individuals that are maybe stuck outside or, um, and I'm talking individuals as in humans and animal form. Um, let's make sure that if you want to walk your dog, you do it in a time when it is cooler. Please do not walk them on the pavement if possible, they will burn their paws. Or put booties on it, my dogs hate booties, so I just don't do that. Um, but I try to walk them in the grass because, um, it is much easier on them and it, and make sure that you're not out there for more than 15 minutes because they really cannot handle the heat. I have two large black German shepherds and they go outside for five minutes and they come in and the heat is rolling off them because it is so hot. Also, children in the heat, it's very, very dangerous to have your child outside playing in this type of heat, especially if you are not making sure that they are in a water environment like our splash park. But even in the splash park, make sure that once they leave, you put shoes on them because it can, the pavement can get very, very hot and hurt them. Um, and make sure that they are, you are giving them plenty of water and beverages so that they stay hydrated. Um, also, you know, make sure that you're taking care of yourself, make sure that you're checking in on your neighbor. This type of heat is the kind of heat that damages people, that hurts people and people can die from it. So make sure that you're checking on, if you haven't seen your neighbor for a while, go over there and knock on the door, make sure that they're okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Burschbacher. Commissioner Rollins, any notes?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then for myself, I have several announcements, let's see. First one, um, following up on last meetings, it was like just last meeting's actions. Um, we approved questions to go forward for Epic MRA. Um, and that survey has been sent out as of today. The city of Mount Pleasant has commissioned, uh, commissioned Epic MRA to conduct a survey of all city employees. Please complete the survey as soon as you can on, online by logging into the website that has been emailed to your respective city emails. Epic MRA will analyze the results of the surveys and report those results by grouping responses into categories. No names or email addresses are required to participate. No one who participates can or will be identified and no responses will be reported in a manner that can be attributed to any individual respondent. To maintain the integrity of the survey, we respectfully request that only one survey be completed per individual. To further ensure the integrity of the study, a unique four-digit user ID number was attached to the email sent out. This number is required to participate in the online survey, which will remain open for participation through July 3rd. Your unique four-digit user ID number again is attached to the email that you received. Thank you in advance for your participation. If you have any questions about the survey, please contact Mr. Kelly Sullivan, project director of Epic MRA with the atta, with the contact information sent out to each individual respondent.
Can I make a comment? I, I'd like to make a comment about the Epic MRA employee survey. First, some background. By the second half of last year, it was apparent to some city commissioners, to some city commissioners, that there was something seriously wrong at city hall. Turnover was significant. It was affecting the city's ability to function properly. The magnitude of the turnover was alarming and not normal. Turnover represented the loss of over 500 years of institutional knowledge and experience. Many who left blamed upper management, some described hostile environment and some still working, they too would be fired or pressured to leave. We have to remember that the city charter has the city commission go through the city manager if they want to talk to employees. The rationale for this is good. It would be improper for city commission to go around the chain of command and, and ask to get things done or express commissioners' individual preferences for priorities in city functions. However, that same restriction of city commissioners also restricts investigations or inquiry about issues, uh, except through the city manager who may or may not be part of the problem. Although most, although most commissioners know what is being said by employees, the commission did not have firsthand feedback from employees. Most of the commission had not even talked to a single former employee. Therefore, it was decided that a survey should be undertaken when employees, uh, where employees could comment anonymously to tell the commission what was going on in the organization. It is important that we know and understand that some of those who left employment do not have a problem with upper management, but rather left for non-related reasons. The survey we undertake is a good thing. It gives employees a chance to anonymously voice concerns, complaints and/or tell us things are, are good. Anonymity, being anonymous, is important because some still vo, voice concerns about retaliation if they were to say anything negative. Some employees have told me of improper and perhaps illegal activity in upper management. Individual employees and former employees talking to me is not proof of any crime or behavior, but it is why the survey is important, almost as important as the commission's willingness to act on the findings. The reason I speak on this topic today before the survey has even commenced is because the tactic used to limit participation. Many employees who, who left and point the finger at upper management as a reason or primary or secondary reason will not be included in the survey because of tactical actions, legal but deliberate purposeful, purposefully. Instead of inviting employees to participate anonymously by conduct, by contacting the survey company directly, employees were asked, as I understand it, employees were asked if they want their personal information shared with a third party conducting the survey. Sounds ominous, I wouldn't want my personal information shared either. However, for upper management, it is effective and succeeding, it has been effective and succeeding, it's frightening many employees from responding at the same time telling the city how many and who will participate. It would have been, in my opinion, proper to explain the purpose of the request for participation and have the individuals contact the survey company directly. So their identity remains anonymous. The typical rationale is the approval, uh, it, it has the approval of the legal advisors giving credibility but hold, but hiding the motive.
I would say that, um, thank you, Commissioner Zhang. As far as that process goes, we gave direction to the city staff and they executed in accordance with, I believe, consultation with, um, labor attorney and best practices there. So we will get the results from the survey. And again, we're looking to, again, it's a climate survey. We've had a lot of changes over the past four or five years now. So we're looking to just get, um, honest feedback, um, that can give us direction in the future on areas to improve upon. So, thank you. Were, the other announcement or other statements I had, let's see, was again commenting, I know there's, um, a number of member, members of the audience who are going, uh, would like to make comments this evening. There was a recent decision by, um, the planning commission regarding, um, instantly, uh, uh, process, a special use permit for Chris' gas station going in on the north end of town. Information on that, um, the Chris' gas station on Pickard and Main Street was subject to a special land use permit. That special land use permit is approved by the planning commission. The city commission does not approve these permits. Those that do feel strongly that the planning commission erred in its decision-making can appeal to the zoning board appeals who consider such cases. See, then, commission. Commissioner Zhang, did you have any final comments? Thank you. All right. With that, uh, we will open up to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Any topic that you would like to speak on is fair game here. Please step up to the podium, you may, will be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. I don't like being rude, I will give you a hand raise at 30 seconds. If you're taking up your full five minutes, then, and I will, I may need to cut you off as well if you do hit that five-minute mark again, I hate being rude, but just forewarning.
So my name is Kathleen Martin, my address is 401 East Plummer Street and since you brought up the issue of the gas station, um, you're gonna hear a little bit about that. I really thought that my, my time being involved in local government was well over, but here I am. So I've learned a whole lot these past two weeks and I guess if I'm gonna shoot my mouth off in public, I'd better be able to back up what I'm saying with some hard facts. I've done public health research for well over 40 years and there are a ton of credible resources that I've been able to use to substantiate our appeal. And you are correct, there is appeal for the, to the zoning board that, uh, will be filed in the next few days. And we've used the National Institute of Health, the National Library- And we've used the National Institute of Health, the National Library of Medicine, National Center for Biotechnology Information to support our opinions that this is a really bad idea. Now, we realize that the city commission has absolutely no influence on changing the decision that was made by the Planning Commission. But um, I want to first make a correction. You're talking about a gas station going in on the corner of Pickard and Main. And the fact is, this is a gas station going in on the location of Pickard sort of Main and Palmer Street. Note that it's on Palmer Street. That will be the face of the storefront, not Main and not Pickard. So um, my purpose of being here tonight is to ha- have your ear and hope that we're gonna stop another atrocity like this from ever happening again. And we're gonna try and get the um further commercial sprawl that's happening on Pickard um, and continuing east of Main Street to not happen anymore. I know that the master plan, um, twenty twenty-five, twenty fifty is still being put together right now. Public input is gathered. I know the focus shifts a little bit every five years, but um, all that information is compiled and turned into a vision plan, a book. It's a very pretty book. It's visually appealing. It's a shiny book that you can look at and get all the information that was decided. This is how we want the plan to go forth, and that's great. But when parts of that plan don't exactly fit in with a new development that the planning director has an eye on and wants to promote, that vision sometimes just kind of gets pushed aside. And in order to make it happen, then you have to do a special use permit application that's very quietly submitted. And there's not really any real attempts made to get the public input, particularly from those that might be adversely affected. So then the planning committee or the planning commission, rubber stamps, whatever the planning director recommends, how many of those people on the planning commission actually do their own deep dive approving a plan that can negatively affect an entire neighborhood? Or do they just take the word from the planning director that this is great and that the company's application meets all the criteria? So in doing that, suddenly an area starts to slowly become rezoned by sprawl, and the existing neighborhood becomes permanently altered. And I'm talking about the Old North Neighborhood, which is the oldest established neighborhood in the city of Mount Pleasant. Established in eighteen eighty-six thereabouts. So we are the oldest neighborhood in all of Mount Pleasant, and because of this decision, it is disrupting our neighborhood. So by Michigan law, residents living within three hundred feet of a property that has a special use permit being considered gets a notice. They get mailed a notice. That's great. Three hundred feet, you get a notice. Three hundred and one feet, you don't get a notice. So that's fine if it's a daycare or a dental office or something like that. But what if it's a gas station or another cannabis dispensary? What then? Three hundred and one feet, don't care. Doesn't matter. Um, and then how much notice do you have to really give? How long does that sign have to be left up? Because we in the neighborhood had no idea that that property was for sale or that there was a special use permit app-
Thirty seconds.
Application actually being uh considered. So per zoning regulations, a special use permit must not adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. How do you define adversely affect? The way it's zoned, south of Pickard is residential, north of Pickard is industrial. The city commission can protect established neighborhoods like the Old North End.
Thank you, Kathleen. Your time has expired.
Applying the right zoning restrictions. Thanks.
I wore a sweatshirt this. It's cold in here. Hello, I'm True Mashinsky. I live at seven two one North Fancher Avenue. And I'm here, the master plan I know is in the works. And I hope that whatever influence that you have as commissioners, that you protect neighborhoods. Um, the boundaries of the Old North End neighborhood are Pickard, Main, Mission, and Broadway. The Old North End is viable, vibrant, affordable, and diversified uh neighborhood. City commissioners and planning commissioners say we need to have diversified neighborhoods. The Old North End meets that criteria. Homes that are over a hundred years old and historic, that are lovingly cared for, affordable homes for first-time buyers, starter homes for young families, single-family homes, rentals, duplexes, houses with multiple apartments within them are in our neighborhood, which blend seamlessly into our neighborhood. It's not like four stories or three stories. That it blends. They're older homes that have been remodeled, and they belong in the neighborhood. So I ask, why disrupt a neighborhood that meets the criteria for affordable housing and rent to build a gas station convenience store on the corner of Pickard, Main, and Palmer? And have semi trucks exit onto Palmer Street? Even though it's going to be a right-hand turn towards Main, semi trucks are still entering a residential area, a residential street. Stable boundaries are crucial for a healthy neighborhood. I'm gonna repeat that again. Stable boundaries are crucial for a healthy neighborhood. So in the master plan of twenty twenty-five and twenty fifty, uh, are the plans there to protect the safety, stability, and welfare that benefits Mount Pleasant homeowners and their neighborhood? So thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Holcomb. I can honestly say I've never been to one of these meetings before. Um, I'm forty-five years old. I've lived in Isabella County since I was six years old. I've owned four houses in Isabella County. Three of those houses that I've owned have been within two blocks of where this proposed store is going in. Um, I've sold, I've, the newest one I purchased was last summer, which is a two hundred East Bennett Avenue, which is two blocks away from that. You know, I guess I come in here tonight, I didn't understand you all didn't have much to do with this decision. I didn't know. I was just commissioner who planned this, who passed this through. I just don't understand it. You know, one of the other houses I owned was in Lake Isabella. I'm really glad to hear that that went through tonight. I'm really glad. Just we're a community, you know what I mean? Now, a couple of years ago, you guys or someone denied a dentist's office going in on that corner because they said there's gonna be too much traffic. And, and now we have this business coming in there. I, I, I think it's to, not even the um economic value, but the social value of our community, like you've just heard. We've had so many small families that live there. Um, it's the oldest neighborhood in town, and I feel like they're getting pushed out of the way for this biggest, I don't know where this business is coming in, why this is being pushed. I mean, it's not local, you know? I just stopped at Empty Keg tonight, talked to Kevin Unger. He opened that thirty years ago. I went to high school with his kids, you know? I mean, that's gonna be shut down, obviously. There's no way they're gonna compete. They're gonna, and they haven't bought them out. That's why everybody here, I think, people that live here thinks that Empty Keg's been bought out. They haven't. No, they, they're not bought out. They're still gonna try to be there. Um, I guess I just don't understand where us as citizens of this community, all the tax dollars that I've paid since I was twenty-two, when I first brought my first home in that neighborhood, matters nothing. You know, I didn't, like she said, none of us, I didn't know until this made the paper. I had no idea this was coming in until this made the paper. Unless you lived with three hundred footer there, you know, and I've talked to everybody on the north side of town. And nobody wants this, so I don't understand why the city of Mount Pleasant is letting this come in. I mean, it's not helping anybody in the north side of town. It's not helping any of our property values. It's not gonna help any of our kids. You know, i- it's just gonna be negative into that community, in my opinion. That's all. Um, I, I just think there needs to be some brakes put on this. And just let's look at some, what else can we do there, you know? I mean, we don't, we got the Sitco right there. We got a Chris right down the street. Do we really need another huge gas station on that corner? I mean, that's all I'm asking. That's it.
Hi, my name is Brenda DeZelsky, and I reside at seven twenty-two North Lansing and Palmer Street. I am here in hopes that the upcoming master plan will protect our neighborhoods and community, promoting affordability and diversity as the one I currently live in. We have young, elderly, working, retired renters and babies. We are fortunate to have numerous nationalities as neighbors, but we are more than just neighbors. I consider us one big family. We acknowledge birthdays, holidays, special occasions, and are there for each other during times of need. Any one of us could name everyone around the block from our daily interactions. I know as a city, we must progress, but let's not regress when it comes to our neighborhoods. Let's keep them safe and enjoyable to those who live there. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give public comment? Yeah.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jan Fulkens. I live at uh three eighteen North Fancher. I've been a resident to the Old North End uh since nineteen eighty-four. I've seen the Old North End thrive, survive. We're a wonderful, it's a wonderful place to live. We came to Mount Pleasant because of a business opportunity and uh raised our children there. And I live, I'm not within the three hundred-foot area. I'm five blocks away. I, I've seen that, that corner for a long, long time. I wonder when are they ever gonna do anything with it? I hope they do something. When they, you know, when they turned down the, the dentist office that was going in there, I was very disappointed. I wish I had gotten notice that something was going to happen. I was very disappointed to find out what was going to go in there. I know we need to do something. And I, I, I can only say to my fellow neighbors that are there, and I, I feel that what's going on, I understand. I chaired, I sat on the zoning board of appeals. I chaired the zoning board of appeals, and I will tell you, my fellow neighbors, if this comes, if I was on there, I know the decision that I would make, and I hope they make that same decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment at this time? And if there's anyone else also, if you would be interested in lining up to make sure that we keep things moving this evening, we appreciate your participation here this evening.
Uh, my name is Dan Herrera. I live behind the proposed place that, for that gas station to be there on Bennett Street. And my biggest concern is that, is that there's gonna be so much traffic going up and down all that neighborhood now because Main and Pickard will not be able to handle that traffic with the post office being across the street and people going there at Christmas time and stuff like that to deliver packages there, and it's gonna be congested. They're gonna be going down our neighborhood, and not only that, it's gonna be the delivery trucks going up and down that neighborhood. And people are gonna be going directly down our neighborhood. And mark my words, who's gonna take responsibility for casualties happening in that neighborhood? For adults outrunning, riding a bicycle, walking their animal, or kids out playing? Who's gonna take responsibility for that? The city of Mount Pleasant? Who? It's, you have to live there and understand what it's like to be in a peaceful little area like that. I've been there for a while, and it's been nice. There's some traffic there, but it's gonna get a lot worse with putting a station there. It's gonna congest that area even more. People are gonna start shooting down the neighborhood to avoid that light, that intersection. And things are gonna be different there, and it's just gonna be busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, my name is Barbara Sanford. This is a slightly different um zoning issue. I live at five twenty-five West Grand. Um, I've actually worked in the city for much longer than I've lived in the city. Um, I've worked here since two thousand twelve, and we moved in two thousand twenty-one. Um, this is concerning the rezoning that is brought by the city, which I was very confused by, um, for the property on Cross Lanes, which is approximately twelve and a half acres, I believe. Um, my biggest concern with that is, one, as many people have brought up, the three hundred feet um rule. Uh, I live, I must live just outside of three hundred feet, so I was not notified um until I happened to drive a different way um, and noticed a sign, "Push back in the bushes" um to look at what was planned. Um, and then after watching the planning commission meeting, found out that they plan or have a concept of a plan. There is actually no plan um to try to change this zoning so that they can apply for grants that may or may not um exist in the hopes of putting um up to thirty-five, from what I understand, because again, concept of a plan, um thirty-five residences per acre, um which would put in the size of my neighborhood roughly three to four times the amount of people. Um, so my quiet little loop of a neighborhood was suddenly become a thoroughway for, you know, who knows how many people. Again, there is no plan that has been stated. Um, so my concern with that is, I bought in a quiet neighborhood. Of course, there's a large piece of property. Yes, it may be developed, assuming that it would be a neighborhood just like all of the neighborhoods that surround that area, not um a high-density um, um residence. So again, I have a small child. There's people walking in this neighborhood all the time. I don't know if anybody has ever tried to drive down Cross Lanes um when Mary McGuire is getting out. It's a disaster. So the thought of adding that many um cars into that section um all the time and people driving straight through our neighborhood all the time um is just downright terrifying. And again, um, just really wanna to emphasize the point that this is the city bringing this and not um the owner of the property. And this is all just with the hope of perhaps maybe getting grants um to develop this area. And I, I, I remember the, the comment from someone else that there's a lot of emotion and facts with this. So yes, of course, this is my home, and there is some emotion in this um because I chose this neighborhood specifically for its character, for the quiet, and I chose to make my home here. Um, and I understand that there are lots of other issues with housing in this area. Do I understand them? No. But I just again want to point out um that my opinion and my thought of my neighborhood does matter as well. So again, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Yeah, anyone who's still wishing to speak, I know we have one coming up, but if you would, please make sure you're lining up um towards the podium. It'll help keep things moving along for us this evening. We appreciate it. We want to make sure everyone has time to speak this evening.
I appreciate it, but I, I could not understand hardly a word you said.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I'm here. Besides my disappointment in the proposed Chris, I, my name's Steve Roth, and I live at five oh eight North Lansing Street. But I'm the sound system business, and I can't begin to tell you how disappointing your sound system is. How many here, how many people here could hear clearly all the people speaking in the microphones? Raise your hand if you could hear clearly. How many here, how many people here could hear clearly all the people speaking in the microphones? Raise your hand if you could hear clearly. It's really pitiful. Just wanted to say that.
Is there anyone else interested in giving public comment at this time? Okay, um, Director Moore, is there anyone with raised hands on Zoom?
We do have one raised hand. Donna, you should be able to speak now.
Hi, this is Donna Chris. I don't know how to add my picture to it. Um, I, again, I, first of all, I just again wanted to thank Mount Pleasant Water Department. When I was out of country, they called me and said that um, I had ten times the water usage. And so I was able to try to get a hold of it and, and find out what was happening. And then I've just been thinking for a long time. I am just so grateful and thankful for Granger Waste Disposal and for the City Commission going ahead and making the decision to use Granger. Routinely, I would spend uh, at least fifty dollars a month on trash tags and all that kind of stuff. I love, I'm, I love Granger. I love being able to just cram my stuff into the bag, into the containers and the recycling, such a large unit. I'm so thankful for that. And um, I appreciate that if I have more than that, I can put another bag out. So I just wanted to say I'm really happy with that and thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Were there any additional emails at this time, Director Moore?
Uh, we did have one from Bill Gerstauer, just stating some concerns about shrubs and tree branches, um, you know, crowding the sidewalks and that.
Concerns about shrubs and tree branches crowding the sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Director Moore. All right, at this time, I am going to close public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. In a moment, I will ask for a recess. We have two work sessions still this evening. We have one on opioid settlement funds allocation and one on considered panhandling ordinance concepts. Um, so if you want to stick around for that, please do so. But at this time with the commission.
Can I ask a question about, there were some comments there that it was going to go to zoning board of appeals? How, how will that be? How will anybody know about that date?
They're a good neighborhood. They'll let each other know.
Yes, so. Gotcha. Um, so the zoning, once the appeal is set, um, I believe. Yeah, so we have a bit of discussion, we're still, we're still conducting um, on this topic.
Kathleen knows about it. She's the one that brought it up.
Yeah, so real quick, um, just turning to staff first though, on the topic. Um, once the appeal is made, what does the process look like for that?
Once the appeal is made, uh, we'll just have to make sure that the ZBA can set whatever date it is. So there's a timeline requirement for that and I can't remember if it's a ten day notice in advance, but we would publicize that meeting and we'll hold the ZBA meeting. But as of right now, I don't believe an application has been filed. It was filed late today and application hasn't been filed.
So once it's filed, sta-, uh, city staff will publicize it. It will be on, on our website, I'm sure. Um, and I'm more than positive the Morning Sun would end up picking that up as well. Um, yeah. Um, with that, um, would any member of the commission appreciate a recess at this time before moving into work sessions?
Yes.
Yes, seeing a recess, five or ten minutes?
Ten.
Ten, gotcha, I'm seeing ten over there. We'll resume at nine thirty.
Yeah, let me, let me go back. Well, I tried to give it as much.
Really? Was it your first time?
Yes.
Wow.
I did a tan.
Not, not ever. I would never do that. Why?
We're going to get started here, ladies and gentlemen. If you want to grab your seats and get ready for the presentation, Commissioner Rollins will join us when she gets back. That's going to be okay. But you guys want to grab your seats? We're going to get started.
Yeah.
We are back in session at nine thirty.
Oh, Brewer.
Starting us off, we're going to be having a discussion on the opioid settlement funds allocation.
All right. So hopefully folks remember Colton Brewer. He is our policy research intern that is currently here at City Hall. And so for his first work session that he's going to be conducting with the City Commission, he's going to be talking about the opioid settlement money research that he's done related to this. So he'll tell us everything about that program um, and a number of different things that can be done with those funds and will be working with the City Commission on how best to spend that funding. Then he'll go back and create the policy for it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colton.
Thank you very much, Aaron, and uh, thank you commissioners for the opportunity to share my research uh, and my recommendations. Um, just a quick disclaimer, I do have a lot of information to get through. I'm going to try to keep it moving. Um, but if you do have any questions, feel free to ask. Uh, this is prior to um, when, when I committed to poli sci for undergrad, uh, I wanted to go into uh, psychology and uh, substance abuse disorders. Um, so this is an area of interest and I do tend to yap about those kinds of things. So feel free, jump in. So, um, first a quick overview of what I want to discuss with you. Uh, so we're going to start with a little bit of background and history on the opioid epidemic. Um, we're going to hit some specifics for Michigan, Isabella County and Mount Pleasant. Uh, we're going to go over exhibit E items and opioid remediation. Uh, then there are some data focused uh, strategy items uh, for handling opioid settlement money that I would like to discuss with you. Uh, some options that we have uh, with our funds. Uh, I drafted a few plans for us and I do have some implementation strategies for you as well. Uh, so background, uh, the first wave of opioid epidemic uh, came in the late nineteen nineties. Uh, pharmaceutical companies and producers were working with doctors and increasing the supply of opioids and we saw a rapid, rapid increase of opioid pill overdose deaths. Uh, then we get the second wave in the early two thousand teens. Uh, we see, instead of uh, pill overdose deaths, we see a rapid increase of heroin overdose deaths. And then in the mid twenty teens was our third wave, uh, and that's when we start seeing synthetic opioid overdose deaths. Um, like fentanyl, uh, especially illegally made fentanyl. Uh, and in twenty seventeen was when, when the opioid crisis was declared a national health emergency. Uh, and some people don't quite understand how we go from pills to heroin and fentanyl. Uh, but basically it comes down to, uh, with the later waves, um, higher scrutiny of prescription refills. Uh, and leaving people in pain, addicted, without a legal or safe option, not the same thing, uh, but sometimes. Uh, and minimal treatment options for addiction. Uh, and then in the twenty twenties, uh, opioid addiction rates are still significantly elevated, but they have decreased since the late twenty teens, um, due to better treatment methods, lower prescription rates and uh, lower social stigma. Um, a little more on that, for every three overdose deaths, uh, local government public safety costs go up and average about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this does cost the city uh, significantly and it is something that we do want to uh, pay attention to. Um, as overdose deaths spike, costs tend to increase at that rate. Uh, for about three years before plateauing, they don't really come back down once they go up. Um, according to the CDC, opioid use disorder uh, cost the nation one point twenty, one point zero two one trillion dollars in twenty seventeen. Michigan's share of that was forty-one point four billion dollars. And assuming the cost by county is equal, uh, Isabella County would have almost five hundred million dollars worth of that cost to shoulder. Uh, and being the major metropolitan area of Isabella County, that would fall to us uh, primarily. This is a little chart with national level numbers. Uh, this is from the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, not going to spend too much time on this one, but main uh, points to take a look at. Uh, in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, one point six million Americans uh, used, uh, had an opioid use disorder. One point six million Americans misused a prescription painkiller for the first time. Ten point one million people misused prescription opioids within that, that past year. And fifty thousand people used heroin for the first time. So, uh, as far as Michigan, Isabella County and Mount Pleasant specifically with our opioid settlement money, uh, stakeholders are widely, widely varied. Uh, everyone from healthcare workers to family and friends, to survivors, uh, to even business owners. Um, basically everyone is touched by it, if not personally, uh, maybe even professionally. Um, Michigan is a little unique with our opioid settlement money. Uh, we actually get uh, funds both from drug producers and from pharmacy companies. There are only a handful of states that get that and we are one of them. So obviously you have your Janssen, Johnson and Johnson, you have Allergan, you also have CVS, Meyer, Walgreens and so on. Um, so essentially the people filling those prescriptions that contributed in that way to the opioid epidemic. they are also held responsible in Michigan. Isabella County is set to receive a little bit more than three point nine million dollars over the course of eighteen years. And in that same time period, we, Mount Pleasant, are expecting just a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If I'm remembering correctly, it's a hundred and thirty thousand and ninety-eight dollars. Settlement money must be spent on opioid remediation. And with that, there's eighty-five percent of dollars have to go to Exhibit E items, and seventy percent have to go to future opioid remediation. And that leads us to Exhibit E, which is essentially a non-exhaustive list of allowable uses for settlement money from the national level settlement. Just a few standouts here. Naloxone, brand name Narcan, is an allowed use of Exhibit E money. Methadone clinics, recovery housing, childcare. Just a couple of standouts on that one. Opioid remediation, that is defined as care, treatment, and other programs or expenditures, including reimbursement for past programs and expenditures, addressing misuse and abuse of opioid drugs, treatment mitigation of OUD, mitigation of other effects of the opioid epidemic, injury, death, things like that. And in opioid remediation is also Exhibit E items. So some database considerations for kind of strategy. Prevention, harm reduction, and treatment efforts should all be comprehensive and available to anyone in need of them. But the Michigan, here comes a mouthful, the Michigan Epidemiological Profile for Recovery and Substance Abuse of twenty twenty-four suggests efforts are best focused on different age brackets. So prevention, the prime target for prevention methods are people up to twenty years old because they have the lowest rates of addiction, and they have the lowest mortality rates due to opioids. Additionally, hopefully, the idea is to either discourage or stop drug use before it becomes a habit for people under the age of twenty because at a certain point, it becomes a lifelong struggle. Harm reduction and treatment methods are best targeted at people twenty-one years old and higher, particularly people in the bracket thirty-five years to fifty-four years because they have the highest death rate due to opioids, and they've had the longest time with the opioid epidemic to develop a habit and have to continue living with that for the rest of their life, honestly. So next, some options for Mount Pleasant specifically. Have some categories set up for you. So we have direct supply of harm reduction equipment, services for people suffering from addiction, and education, preventing drug use and habituation, encouraging treatment, better care for care providers. All of the options that I'm going to present to you here come from inequality.org, which is with the Policy Research Institute, Johns Hopkins, and other Michigan cities and counties, what they're doing with their opioid settlement money. So direct supply of equipment options. First things first, ordering and distributing low-cost naloxone. It's about five dollars a unit when you go generic. You don't need brand name, that's just gonna cost more. And you don't need high dose because even the low-cost generic standard dose is effective against very strong opiates such as fentanyl. Along the same line, ordering and distributing drug contaminant test strips. And those are only about fifty cents a unit when you bulk order. We can't, you know, we can't just assume that people are just gonna stop using drugs. But what we can do is hopefully give them the tools to do them safely while they're working towards improvement and working towards recovery. And then last thing, publicly accessible vending machines that contain both of those two items. I would not recommend charging more than what those units cost on their own. It's not a profit-seeking venture for us. We want these people to be safe and get help. And the best way to do that is just have those available. Allow them to just spend however much it costs us so we can replace that for them or for someone else. Some service options, so funding local recovery centers, funding research and treatment of neonatal abstinence syndrome. We could fund transportation vouchers to and from healthcare and recovery facilities, also free Wi-Fi for telehealth in certain settings and areas. We could make widely available recovery clinics that give same-day scripts, funding those. We could fund secure recovery-based housing for those afflicted with OUD or other SUDs, ideally with no sobriety requirements because if someone has an addiction and they have to get clean to get into recovery housing, they're probably not gonna get clean until they're in some kind of housing. We take for granted the little things, you know, a bed, a shower, a locking door. And these are not things available to people in homeless shelters most of the time. So because of that, no sobriety requirements on recovery housing is the ideal. Obviously, we would rather they not be doing drugs in the recovery housing, but unfortunately, we can't really, you know, police that necessarily. And then last, one of my personal favorites, creating a mobile harm reduction recovery unit or units. So essentially, we bypass any kind of zoning that you would need with like a standing, solid, permanent recovery center. You put it in a van or a bus or something of that kind. They offer clean needle services, drug contaminant test strips, naloxone, bloodborne illness testing. All of it is operated by medical professionals and recovery professionals that have the training necessary to do those things. And again, ideally, this would be entirely free to users in that setting. Anything outside of that, I understand, you know, we would need to charge for replacement of items. But at the same time, if they're coming to a harm reduction or recovery unit, they're already asking for help. And it's best to just give it. So last, we have some education options. So funding local health department, research into opioid use and overdose data, funding research treatment of neonatal abstinence syndrome, expanding training for healthcare and social workers regarding pregnant drug users. And then last, production of, production and distribution of harm reduction educational materials. Depending on your order size, you can make pamphlets for anywhere between thirty cents and a dollar twenty per unit. Just write down its state base. So just some considerations before I give you my three plan proposals. First thing, there's obviously way too many programs that we could choose to fund and simply too little money to actually fund them all, at least effectively. So the following plans are just suggestions. Almost all of the options that I'm gonna give you do qualify for Exhibit E and opioid remediation. So you can pretty much chop and change any of them. Almost any of them could be in a finalized plan. And then last, any price information that I'm giving are just cost assumptions based on similar programs in other Michigan cities and counties. So my first plan is taking about fifteen percent of that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That works out to nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Purchase vending machines, you can get them used pretty cheap. Stock them with the naloxone and drug contaminant test strips. Take forty-six point five percent, that works out to sixty thousand five hundred dollars. Bulk order naloxone and drug contaminant test strips. And then take the remaining fifty thousand dollars and distribute it to local recovery centers, healthcare centers, local health department for opioid use disorder research. Next, this one requires the most partnership outside of the government. That last one, we can pretty much just do. This one, we would definitely need to partner with some other organization or organizations. So same breakdown as far as pricing. First op, first point is to fund recovery housing without sobriety requirements. Second would be to establish that mobile harm reduction unit, recovery unit that I was talking to you about. And then the last point would be to distribute the rest of the funds to local recovery centers to help the community. Then last, this is kind of an even split between things we can do ourselves and things that we would need to partner with other organizations to do. So first, take twenty-five percent, that is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to fund recovery housing without sobriety requirements. Thirteen thousand dollars, which works out to about ten percent, to create and distribute harm reduction informational pamphlets. Forty-five thousand five hundred dollars to bulk order generic naloxone and drug contaminant test strips, each one of which would come with an informational harm reduction pamphlet as long as we still have them available. And then last, the remaining thirty-nine thousand to fund local health department opioid use disorder research. So last slide I have for you, just some implementation strategies. So the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars is not gonna be given in a lump sum. It will be over the course of eighteen years. Last, I was aware, we have not received any of it yet, and we don't know how much each payout is gonna be. We don't know if they're gonna be the same amount over that eighteen years. I would assume probably, I would hope probably. But we simply don't know yet. Because of that, I do have some implementation strategies. Each one kind of has a few pros and cons. So first, spend the settlement money as it comes in. I like this one. One pro is it has, the money maintains a high velocity. It's able to get out there and help people quicker. The only downside is that it's not as cost-effective over time. With inflation, you know, your dollar is gonna be worth more today than it will be in eighteen years, and that's just about a guarantee. In that same vein, spending existing funds and then treat settlement money as a reimbursement that is allowed with Exhibit E. Again, I like this one because that money is spent. We don't have to worry about inflation as much. Services are funded immediately. Only problem is it does have a high upfront cost, and it will be a long time until you're fully reimbursed for that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then last, would be to wait to spend opioid money until some or all of it has been distributed and collected. Now, I do give credit to this one because you can spend in larger sums, just like the previous one. Only problem is that the settlement money has to be stagnant for some time. And the reason that's an issue is because then it's not helping anymore. The longer it's sitting and not being spent or not being used as a reimbursement, the longer that money is not helping people that need it. And that's just about it. Any questions?
A question on the slide before the, you had the Exhibit E.
Yeah.
The slide before that, those last two sentences.
Right down here?
Yeah, settlement money, spend on opioid remediation, eighty-five? Is it a choice eighty-five percent? I don't.
No, it's both. So seventy percent have to be, seventy percent of programs have to qualify as future opioid remediation. So for example, naloxone would count as an Exhibit E item, and it would count as future opioid remediation.
Okay, that, one more question.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what the name of the slide was, but you talked about neonatal abstinence syndrome.
Yes. So that is if you, so if there's a pregnant, soon-to-be mother who is also using opioids or some other drug, once that child is born, that child will go through a period of withdrawals, essentially. So neonatal new baby, they're now abstinent from that drug use, and that can cause health issues with the child.
One last thing I commend you, that was an impressive presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Allison.
We have some good things already locally. Some with Central Michigan University, that they have some kind of a mobile health truck or whatever it is that goes around, and they would probably be good partners for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's one less, you know, one less expenditure. You don't have to get the van, right?
Right. Yep, and then I'm not sure what other health agencies would do this, but I know Isabella Citizens for Health is known for taking pretty much anyone that walks in their doors. So that could be another good option.
Yeah, one, one reason why I do like the mobile unit is because you don't have to worry about zoning. And also, it's not, it's not just like an ambulance, you know? It's not designed for urgent, you know, emergencies. It is designed for people to, who are drug users. They hear, oh, you know, the harm reduction unit is gonna be in Island Park, let's say. It's gonna be in, you know, in Island Park. Okay, well, it's a non-emergency. That drug user is able to then go there as long as they can find transportation. They can go there, they can get tested for bloodborne illnesses. They can do a clean needle exchange. They can stock up on naloxone. They can get a drug contaminant test strip, and then that's that. Any emergencies would be handled through, you know, EMS, and they would be brought to a hospital such as Isabella.
Right.
Commissioner Bush.
I agree with Commissioner Alziger that I think it would be really important to work with partners in the community. Saginaw Triple Indian Tribe, and then Bear River.
Bear River Health.
Bear River Health, yeah.
Absolutely.
I just, in the sense of, you know, not reinventing the wheel. But I do think that with this amount of money, you know, we are limited on what we can do. So I think supporting programs that are already in place, like as a city partnership. I think the prevalent, I start seeing more and more Narcan around. My daughter has it on her keychain. I have one in my car, you know? And I think even just the visibility of some of those items, like you said, like decreases the stigma.
Yeah.
And like the prevalence of that discussion in the area. I would be interested in, as a commission, discussing the opportunity or discussing the option of fronting the money. I don't, I don't know if that was option.
Yeah, option two for implementation.
And one of the ways I'd like to make a point for that is we have yet to designate marijuana money, like for anything. We've just said, let's just see what happens. You know, considering the proverbial windfall we just had, this is, that's, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's only, that's a small percentage of that. And then I think that would be a very direct. I think that, I think that's a process that I think that perhaps city residents could see and get behind. So I'd like to consider that in.
That's, that's also a good point. We can always choose to increase funding through other means for any of these things. Particularly, you know, obviously marijuana money would be an easy, an easy sell in the sense of, you know, use tax money from a drug to help, you know, remediate a worse drug, right? So that would absolutely be something that we could do. But as far as just this one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, personally, I like the idea of, you know, doing those partnerships and whether it be with Central Michigan or Bear River Health or whoever. And just really kind of stepping up the game and trying to get people the help that they need.
I think it's just a real excuse to get kind of kicked in the butt and get involved in the solution, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kirschbacher.
I am a recovery court treatment team for Isabella County. I also do a lot of the substance and alcohol use risk assessments for the, for the court. One of the things that, one of the things that I usually do when I'm, we're doing a risk assessment, if the person is fully, you know, still very involved in their addiction, and they've been brought in because of legal, you know, issues. You know, the first thing I do is, is send them into recovery. I send them to like Bear River Health or another facility because they can't, even though they want to, you know, get out of the legal system, so they have to get clean, they have to do things. It's really, really hard for them to do something like that. My, my practice, we work with a lot of substance abuse. We have Narcan and the strips available in. available in our practice, uh, many of my um clinicians work or are part of uh Pier Three Sixty, which is part of the tribe, um, and working through, you know, helping people get clean. I think that I agree with, like, um, looking at the tribe as one of the partners. I think that, um, the Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe would be very beneficial. They also, I believe, might get opiate money, but I do know that they have, they always have an opiate summit every year that is in the fall, I would, if, you know, I would encourage anyone to be able to go to that, because there's a lot of good information. But there's also, just talking to, um, um, somebody on the recovery court team about some of the funding issues that they have in helping their, um, uh, their, for lack of a better word, their clients, because I don't like calling them, you know, like part of the legal system. But their clients helping them with gas money to get back and forth, um, to court, the, um, or bus passes, or, um, giving them options to be able to go to different meetings, um, you know, setting them up with uh recovery programs, whether it's an individual counselor or a, um, or mental health therapist, or if it's a group like Pier Three Sixty or the AA or NA in the area. Um, I do like the fact that you lean a lot towards um harm reduction, harm reduction has been proven nine times out of ten to be way more successful than complete sobriety.
Particularly significantly more um successful than further criminalization or, uh, you know, putting that money into prisons or jails. That is simply not an effective way to handle this, this issue.
Yeah.
Uh, because all that does is create more criminals, um, and people who probably shouldn't be criminals because they're ill, they have an illness. Um, so yeah, most of my, most of mine focus more on harm reduction, uh, just because, especially when, when you're talking about like no sobriety housing, it's another one that I really find very important. Um, if you can't get a bed without being sober, and you can't get sober without a bed, which one are you, you know, whi- which one's happening first, right?
The overdose is happening first. Um, I do take offense of you only listing social workers. I would prefer that you say mental health therapist.
Okay.
Commissioner Rollins, any comments?
No, I'm good.
Yeah. Commissioner Zhang, if you'd love.
I think it's, it's helpful, uh, Commissioner Pirscher has that experience and knowledge, and I hope she, I hope you continue to guide us, like, this is what's important, this is what I see, because for somebody who doesn't see that, it's helpful to get face in there to understand what's happening, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, you did a great job, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, talking about.
Good job.
Going uh from the work session, it sounds like there's interest in primarily trying to use our dollars to amplify other, uh, other community partners versus like striking out on our own, just so, just seeking out partnerships is kinda what I'm, was picking up.
Yeah, just like not reinvent the wheel, and, you know, there are already programs that need support, that could use it.
Gotcha, um, a question that kinda came up for me, um, and I think you brought, started bringing up, um, was the idea of funding as we go, as we start receiving funds, or would the commission be more interested in, um, using something, again, as Commissioner Bush had mentioned, um, potentially using something like, uh, the marijuana dollars, or just funds from the general fund at large um, to fund some of this work?
I, I think we should use the marijuana dollars.
Okay, yeah, interest in marijuana dollars, it's, again, it seems to be a pretty uh straight-through line there, um, we talked about.
And then, and then.
Yeah, so the question that came up was, pay us, pay ourselves back, so essentially we um, because the hundred thirty thousand is gonna trickle in over eighteen years, was it?
Yeah.
So do we take funds from a source, marijuana dollars, for example?
Yeah.
Pay it all upfront, so we can just fund the program, or whatever actions we wanna take, um.
And then sidesteps inflation as well.
Yeah, or do we wanna trickle it in as we get to that? Commissioner Bush.
Would lobby with this size, with this smaller amount of money in the scheme of things, that, that we would just fund it, and then the money that came in, we could use to continue to fund like, like, like theoretically, if we bought a vending machine, we could fill the vending machine every year or something theoretically. I don't think that, I, I, I feel like it, I don't really see the point of paying ourselves back a hundred thirty thousand dollars over eighteen years.
You'd be.
I think a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over eighteen years is a reasonable amount for the city to spend on something like this.
Gotcha, so kinda spend funds upfront to establish the plan, and then, but not, um, again, paying back, more of matching. We're matching the funds that we're getting to the opioid.
I would say basically matching it, but by, like, so it's kinda like two birds, one stone, we're, we're, we're matching it. And we're also making it.
Augmenting the funds from the state then, so we're just adding to it then?
I mean, i- i- in, in a way, we're, we're, we're matching, and it's kind of like a, it's a matching ahead.
Just to get more upfront money.
Just to get more upfront money, um, like to, to show our investiture in it, and then.
Kind of, if I may, buy the vending machine, and then, like, with a larger, like a bulk buy right now, and then over the next eighteen years, use the funds that we get to like.
Yeah, the vending machine was a, was a theoretical example, but it's a, but, because I, I do think it'd be, what we actually spend it on, I think it's gonna be, we need to make that decision with partners.
Yeah.
And, and I just think that, uh.
I say vending machine because, again, it's more of an example, like the larger upfront cost, and then we have a little money trickling in, and it costs less to fill the vending machine, so again, we can use it to maintain our, the services.
Exactly.
And for what it's worth, you can get a vending machine used for like eight hundred bucks, so.
Okay, let's move away from where we put these vending machines.
That's another thing, and that's why I think we need to work with partners with stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, preferably higher traffic areas, um, just because you, you want that visible, um, for anyone walking by that may have an opioid use disorder, or some other substance use disorder, um, you would want them to have a higher chance of walking past it and seeing it, uh, now I'm not suggesting every street corner downtown, but, you know, higher traffic areas.
Say, well, we're, we're gonna encounter resistance with stuff like that, I, I worked at the public schools for several years, and we were all set up to install, um, these little lock boxes that were supposed to be something that kids could slip their vape, vapes in, or pills in, no questions asked, and it was gonna be like real discreet in a couple areas of the school. Superintendent no-noted it because she thought it looked bad for parents, so. Um, you gotta be careful, there's stuff like that's gonna be out there, so that's why I think it's important to work with like the full backing of partners and
Yeah.
Like, because even parking a van, like if we park a van at Island Park, somebody's gonna be like, well, my kids, you know, my kid's, you know, eighth birthday is going on right there, and so, yeah, there, uh, you know, it's, I mean, we know how much people like to protect their best interests, you know.
The whole not in my backyard.
Right, not my backyard thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Director Loria.
Yeah.
The county has a vending machine, does it not? Didn't they put it at the jail? I thought that they had purchased a vending machine with some of their, with some money. Because it, it triggers in my mind that the county thought that the best place to put it was at the jail. So when visitors came in, they could, I, yeah, which sounded like entrapment to me, but.
The health department, um, is frequently giving away a lot of these materials, so, but yeah, the reliability that it, like, the know where you can get it type situation could be valuable, yes.
Ask a question here, Bob. You know, the, the discussion there to say, get the money upfront, is there, and it, it seems like maintaining, like the vending machine, you get that now so that you can keep filling it, but like in, in brochures and stuff, you know, you wanna, wanna keep being, do it for a long time. So, do most communities, I don't wanna blow the wad all upfront, then we can't do anything, we got everything started, and then we can't finish it, but I mean, how, how does that work?
Um, so, at a certain point, obviously, the opioid settlement money is gonna stop, um, so after eighteen years, once we start getting it, we're not getting any more from it.
Well, I meant, I meant from us, you know, if we ask, if we want the whole thing upfront there, so we can start doing something with it.
Yeah.
I- is there an advantage to, to spread it out, I mean, or, or is it, is the best thing to be doing is to get, and use it all up as quick as we can here?
That really does come down to your decision, um, only because, you know, yes, it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars that I would, I would be asking you to spend upfront, um, or split out, split up over eighteen years, or however long you decide to, to make that. Um, but, yeah, I'm, you're asking more about like the reimbursement, or like.
What do most communities do, what, I mean, from us, I, I, I could appreciate, like, the, the fact that we're saying, let's get this thing, it's our money upfront, get it and start using it, but I, I don't want it to be like a big fizzle now, and then, then what do we do next year, or five years, you know?
Right, right.
Because eighteen-year program, obviously, they wouldn't spread it out, but a hundred thirty thousand over eighteen years doesn't seem like that much, so.
Right.
Uh, where's, where's the maintenance part of it versus the?
Right, so I, I guess the, the best, the best place that that could come from would be marijuana tax money. Um, as far as like continuation of any programs beyond that one hundred and thirty thousand, uh, I understand that we may want to use that tax money for other things, um, and a hundred thirty thousand dollars is a fair chunk of marijuana tax money, um, but that would make the most sense to me uh, as far as like continuing any, any programs, ordering more brochures, ordering more naloxone, or test strips, anything like that.
Do people use brochures anymore? I feel like QR codes mounted places are more, far more effective, but.
Also an option, yeah.
Um, but, yeah, I, I just, yeah, I, I really like, we had a, I, I this is kind of long overdue in terms of, like, the city being a part of what's already happening in other agencies in our community, so like I said, I think this is like being kicked in the butt to get, to get with the team, find out how we can best help, so, yeah, like, working with other partners is my number one priority, but I would be willing to come to the table, and I would make the argument for the city to come to the table with, we would like to offer our a hundred and thirty thousand upfront to join the club, to be part of the solution, and then going forward, I mean, we're talking, we could all, then when we get, when we get the settlement money, then.
Just put that right in.
Just put that right into, like, the participation.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that gets handled, like, on a financial level in terms of, like, is it something the city can just sign over the check, or?
That I'm not too sure about, I didn't see anything explicitly saying we can't do that, uh, because any, any ventures that we, that we pursue with our own money, that's our own money, we can, you know.
Because I just think that's the responsible thing to do, I mean, it's like, yeah, just work with the experts who are already doing the thing.
Maybe we could, um, think of what resources we're aware of, and talk to various people. Can we be a partner with you, what are you already doing, get some more information?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we, we've got several great places to, I mean, the, the health department, the tribe, CMU, um, I mean, the county.
Yeah.
The county does have a vending machine.
Is that the jail?
And it's, no, it's at, um, Forty-two Sony Three Corporate Way, and it is in, um, collaborative effort of Michigan Therapeutic Consultants, Behavioral Health Group, and Michigan, Central Michigan District Health Department, and all of the Narcan in there is free.
Hmm, okay.
And they also have fentanyl strips in there.
Um, one other thing that I did come across in my research that I do want to just make a point about, uh, one other option is we can pool resources, uh, that is allowed, we can pool resources with the county or with, uh, other cities in Isabella County, we are allowed to do that, so if we wanted to say, you know, partner with Isabella County and just contribute our one hundred thirty thousand dollars to their three-point-nine million, make it, make it e- a little over four, um, that is an option that is, is available to us.
Gotcha, so I feel like, um, general direction I'm hearing is seeking out direct, uh, um, specific partnerships that we could identify. I'm not hearing any major objections to putting forward, in my mind, it seems like one-time funds of like the hundred thirty thousand just upfront, so of like a larger expenditure like that, um, but, so again, working off the idea of like we would fund it upfront as you're continuing to do your work, so.
Awesome.
Um, any other questions for the commission and everything?
Um, are there, are there any particular programs that we are really feeling, or any that we really are not feeling? Um.
I don't like brochures.
No brochures, okay. Well, hey, I mean, we just got a graphic design intern, right? We can, we can put together.
Find something else for him to do, I guess.
Yeah, you guys have heard of it, right?
Hey, I, I used to work at an AT&T, you'd be surprised how many flip phones are still out there.
Yeah.
I'd like to move back. All right.
But that's, that's a good point, and I think sometimes maybe, I don't like the brochures either, because they get it, and then they're gone, where the internet's gonna stay there, although it helps if there's a sign someplace that says,
Yeah.
Scan this, or, or if you've got this problem.
Right.
You, I mean, there's gotta be something to attract people to it, because.
Well, I mean, even with that, what we could, what we could do is work with local business owners, uh, anywhere, anywhere that there's a bulletin board of any kind. Uh, so local business owners, healthcare facilities, recovery facilities, and just print out flyers. Low cost, we don't have to go to Staples for it, we have, we have printers, um, with a QR code to the website, have them post it.
Would it be safer to just call it a promotional or advertisement portion of the budget versus like specific two fly, like, brochures? We could just, again, general advertising.
Colton, are you comfortable calling some of these places that we've been mentioning to see what they already have in place?
Yeah, absolutely.
You talking to like the tribe and the, and the county and things like that?
And the health department.
Health department.
I would like to see, uh, recovery housing.
Recovery housing, okay.
Can we do that with nineteen, like, again, like.
But if we, yeah, we get together and we work with the tribe and the health department.
Yeah, partnership.
I think we create a partnership, I think that, and even, um, involve Bear River Health, and because they may be able to help us with that.
I think that'd be a great option, um, especially I know, um, the Isabella County, or, um, the, the shelter on the nor- uh, on Main Street and everything, they don't, they don't have, um, the Restoration House, they, they are abstinence, they can't, they do not allow, and so when we're talking about harm reduction, having a safe place, having the bed that you mentioned, so, that's an asset that might be missing.
One, one thing with recovery housing that I find, uh, a, a very fascinating thing to explore uh, is the concept of, uh, essentially little tiny home neighborhoods. Uh, obviously, you have to work out zoning for that, you have to work out a handful of things with that, uh, but I had spoken with Manwala uh, at one point or another, and we were both very much in favor of the idea of tiny homes, so you can, you have a bed, you have a bathroom, and you have a locking door.
Yeah.
And then that's that, you're in a community, you have that security of the locking door, you're able to go to sleep, you're able to clean yourself, and then you can get out and, and actually, you know, start that path to recovery.
I need to talk to Amanda that was here speaking, she's with, um, she's right up here in the tower. She's with the, um, Housing Commission.
Housing Commission.
And she had started talking about doing, um, tiny homes, so that would be something that you should talk to her about, too. I know theirs was going to not be for drug abuse, but there may be, she may be able to give you information on that.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, even if we wanted to just integrate that at a, a lower level, and then use that as kind of a springboard, so like, if there are twenty tiny homes, we say, hey, can we make five of them recovery, like, just low-key recovery housing? Um, and kinda see where it goes from there, that's all, that would also be an option.
That could fill some of those eighteen years.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have enough, um, direction to work with there, do you feel, Colton?
Oh, yeah, tell me a direction on that.
Perfect. Thank you, Colton, for the great, um, presentation, we look forward to seeing you back in the future.
Thank you all.
Um, okay, um, last item on the agenda, twenty-five, consider panhandling ordinance concepts. Director Loria is making his way over to the podium, we appreciate your patience with us.
So, in your packet, you have, uh, my memorandum where we've been experiencing s- some issues uh, in regards to panhandling, uh, not just on Mission Street where it was most common. Um, and would, uh, I'll say occasionally, I guess, uh, cause issue of of, um, you know, people running out into traffic, um, because somebody's gonna give them something. you know, people running out into traffic, um, because somebody's gonna give them something. Um, impeding the traffic and whatnot. There's a safety measure there. I understand. Um, the, uh, the premise of it. But now it's been downtown and we've received some complaints. Not necessarily of asking, but people holding up signs. Um, that are making, uh, some of the business owners, uh, uncomfortable. Uh, based on feedback they got from, uh, customers that are not feeling safe. Now, if, if they are overly aggressive or, um, impeding traffic, we can, we can deal with that, that sort of stuff. Uh, what we're running into though is, uh, someone just holding a sign. And, um, they're, they're not, I wouldn't call them aggressive. But they're, they're attentive to the people that are walking down the sidewalk. So, um, we have nothing in our ordinance that, uh, really addresses that aspect of it. And, um, it's kind of limited what we can do. And so I am here trying to get some direction on what you would like to see happen.
I just have a question. One time I was talking to a panhandler and saying, are you from here? And they get, they were being bussed in from Detroit to come here.
We, I think I've talked to you guys about this before. Um, w- we are, we, we are very fortunate in this community. Um, to have some of the resources that we have. Um, the, the methadone clinic, the soup kitchen, the, uh, ho- homeless shelter. That is, 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 so we have seen that. Um, we have also seen other. I guess law enforcement agencies buy bus tickets for people and send them up here because we have resources. Um, so, yes, that, none of that is shocking to me.
Um, talking about it, um, so, um, in your memo, you state, um, that enforcement needs to be carried out with sensitivity, empathy, and balance. I rea- I really appreciate, again, you already addressed kind of like where a lot of my concerns at. Um, I know that there are concern, there's concerns that come forward from the business community or other members in the community. Um, I, I think that action, like, we'll probably discuss some kind of action on an ordinance or something tonight. I are on the side of caution of like, you know, I look at it, I don't, I don't see the, the, like, the large-scale harm necessarily. That, that, that's my personal preference. Um, I think if you're a person down on your luck, um, and all you really have is just, oh, like with a sign asking for money, I think that's your right to do, to be, and like as a basic humanity, just if you want to stand on the side of the road and ask for that. I don't see just, again, the harm to the city. Have there been any, like, again, I know there's been complaints. But have there been any direct, um, damages that have occurred?
Like assaults?
Yes, yeah, any, any, anything that like this.
There, there's been aggressive behavior where the person had, had been able to run away. Um, I'm not saying they would have been assaulted. Um, but they get, um, there's times when, you know, I myself, we, we get loud when we, when we get upset, people get scared. Um, you know, I, I certainly am not going to, um, diminish uh, someone who was scared by an encounter they had, I, that's a mistake in itself. Um, but I also know that, and, and I agree with you, there's people who are down on their luck or have other issues, uh, mental, uh, 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 illness and, and whatnot. Um, so I, I get all that.
Yeah.
Um.
And you're asking us for direction. This is an issue that was brought to the commission, so I, again, I'm not, I appreciate the work you're doing, um, Paul. Um, I just, as we're having this discussion, I air, I air on the side of reserved action. Um, that, that's my personal preference there, but I just want to put Commissioner Bush.
Well, what, like, what type of consequences would we be putting in play? Because if the, if the priority is to provide resources and assistance, then, then, you know, how does that happen? But you just say you can't be here anymore, but here's some information, basically?
I, I mean, the, we can't. There has to be a tool or mechanism for us to use. Without that.
Right.
So, i- i- and if, if the idea is that, um, fining them or giving them tickets, if that's going to work. I'm not gonna stand here before you and say, yeah, that's gonna work great. Cause it, it's not. Um, but we can either, uh, we can have a tool in those circumstances that, you know what, it's illegal, it's against city ordinance. Uh, you know, you're going to jail, um, or you move on. Or if you don't want that, then, you know, you guys, you guys are the policy setters. You're gonna have to take accountability for it. Um, because right now we do not have the tool we need to take care of the issue in those circumstances. Because I can't make someone go to treatment. We offer it every time.
Right.
Every time.
Right.
Um, so.
I, I, I had something else to add, but if, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Rollins.
So are we being asked essentially to form an ordinance pertaining to panhandling? Or being on the sidewalk asking or busking or?
I'm, I'm asking you if you would entertain an ordinance to address the issues that we're seeing downtown in regards to panhandling. If, if I'm just going to draft, if you guys have no interest in that. I, I'm fine with that, but I can't, I, I can't routinely field questions from, from officers in, in my people or residents, resident, business owners, customers. You know, what are you doing about the people begging downtown? And I, I, I say, there's nothing I can do. As a public safety director, it is my obligation. And in my job to come before you and say, this, it's allowed, it's not prohibited. There's nothing that we can do. Um, if we want to amend the ordinance to include it, the holding of the signs, asking without any verbal, um, sort of interaction or any, um, aggressive behavior, if we just want to prohibit it, then we can do that, or we don't have to, but it's this body's decision for that, because I do not have the tool to prevent that. If I had the tool, I may be up here explaining why we took action in a certain circumstance. But I do not have the tool, I do not have the, the ordinance to do that.
Um, Commissioner Zhang hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I can, I understand, like, and people probably don't complain as much when they see the person on the, on the corner and they're driving right by and they just drive by. And when they come out in the street and, and get in the way of your car, then, then you gotta really wonder what's happening here. Downtown, you know, when you're, if the person is literally, and that's some of the considerations we might have to have as a commission. But if, if that person's gonna, you know, impede you, you're trying to go and he gets in the way, wait, he's stopping you, literally, he's getting in your way or he, he like, don't leave me here, I, I wanted, I want to ask you for money, so well, I don't have any money, I'm not gonna give you, whatever. And there's gotta be something because, you know, carrying a sign around says, well, I could use your pop cans. And then getting out of the way of everybody is different than how you, uh, how you solicit your money, you know, and, and I think from that standpoint, I can see that issue. And not everybody's frightened just because somebody stops them and, and says, hey, if you got a buck for me. But on the other hand, if a person comes up, stops you, and almost feels like you can't get around them, that can be frightening. And depending what the person looks like or how they're acting. So I, I can recognize where some is gonna, somebody's gonna say, or the police department needs something that says, look, you, you've gone too far here. You know, it's one thing to have a sign to stand in the corner, but if you're, if you're stopping people, impeding the traffic, you, you somehow there needs to be something so that we don't allow some people to frighten others. And frightening is maybe subjective.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, if you're, if you're, if you won't let them by, that can be frightening.
And then there's some people, you know, that have just come and called me and said, when I see that they're down on the on the, on the corner, I cross the street mid-block. Well, you know, a- a- again, that's their decision. But is it safe to cross the street mid-block, not in the crosswalk? I would never stand up here and tell you that it would, it's safe to do that. So, but again, it, this is a delicate issue. Uh, it, it's, it's a, it's a complicated one, and, um, I just want to be all on the same page.
Commissioner Prishbacher.
Okay, so I have, um, some statistics here. Um, fifty percent of panhandles, handlers, um, usually have some sort of mental health issue. Fifteen percent of them are veterans. Twenty-six percent of them are probably on some sort of state assistance. Now, in twenty twenty-three, eleven percent of the US citizens, um, eleven percent of US citizens were living at or below poverty level. Now, it doesn't sound a lot, eleven percent, but out of three hundred and forty-seven billion Americans, give or take a few. Um, that's thirty-seven million people.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Um, in, now the standard, a lot of people will say, well, you know, they're asking for money, but they get, they get, um, social security disability or whatever. The average social security disability is nine hundred and forty-three dollars a month. How many of you can live on nine hundred and forty-three dollars a month? You can't, it's impossible, even with some of the things. Um, in twenty, then twenty twenty-three, the poverty level, and I know Aaron's gonna argue with me on this. But the poverty level in Isabella County was twenty-three percent, okay? That's out of sixty-four thousand people, that's fourteen thousand in, at, were poverty level. Um, and our unemployment rate as of November twenty twenty-four was almost five percent in the city of Mount Pleasant. That's a lot, and unemployment could also mean underemployed. Working twenty-six hours a week at twelve bucks an hour, ten bucks an hour, whatever, that's not enough to survive. Now, the reason why I throw these out here is I agree that, um, individuals have the right to walk down our streets and feel safe. I do. Um, but I also would like to point out that Maslow's hierarchy of laws, um, has always said that as long as your basic needs are met, you're usually able to achieve more, you're usually happier. Um, basic needs are not met at nine hundred and forty-three dollars a month, okay? Um, I would like to know, uh, Director Loria, where is our mental health professional? Where are we with that?
Um, we use, uh, RISE for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't think that this is, I don't think that this issue um, is going to be solved with, with that position.
No, but I think that that position can help officers understand how to handle individuals in a way as well.
Yeah, there, certainly for that, but I, I think there's I mean, we're automatically, I mean, you're certainly not implying that we're gonna handle it badly right out of the gate.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure that we're not we're not being defeated before you even give us a bite at the apple here.
No, but I want to know how, if we have some type of ordinance that says, um, spoken, written, or printed words um, to ask, beg, or solicit.
Yep.
What kind of, you know, usually what we do is when somebody does something like, uh, violates an ordinance, we give them education first.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, I don't think, you know, if we arrest them and put them in jail, now we've compounded their issues by them having to pay a fine.
Yeah.
And having to pay for time in jail and having to get a lawyer or a, um, a public defender. You know, all of that stuff.
Agreed.
Causes them even more frustration because if they spend too much time in jail, if any of these individuals have SSI or SSDA, they, they lose it.
Lose it, yeah.
And then they, that becomes even worse. So I'm wondering, what are of the things that you want? And I understand, and I, I do agree that we should have some type of ordinance to help control some of this. Um, but what are some of the things that you're looking at? Um, as consequences for these individuals?
Well, first and foremost, um, we can offer, and we do offer, mental assistance, substance abuse, counsel, we offer all of that now.
Yeah.
And we can't make them. Now, again, if there's a consequence, and let's just indulge me for a second, if, if the consequence after seeing a person who's been told, you know, a half a dozen times not to solicit on the sidewalk with a sign, if that person goes to jail after that many warnings, um, does it provide any more motivation to say, you know what? I think I'm gonna take them up on the offer of getting some mental health treatment or getting some counseling. I don't know. Um, but I, if there's no consequence, they know that there's no consequence. I, I mean, I have no problem at all saying, look, we decided that it's best that, um, we continue to chip away at offering them services that are available in the community, we're just not gonna take them to jail? Okay, I, I agree. Writing them a ticket, like you said, I completely agree. It, it ain't gonna do anything. And so, this would be for those um, I, I also think that we have great services here. Um, that with some motivation, maybe more of the services would be taken up. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that they're not heavily used now, but again, we see the same people over and over and over again. So, but please, I, I get what you're saying, and, and that's why I did put that paragraph in there. This is a a very delicate balance.
It is. I just wish that we had, um, we spent a lot of money looking for, um, not, not us. But the government has spent a lot of money looking for ways to reduce funding or reduce the over-expense of money and instead cut programs.
Yeah.
That help these individuals and help them get to where they need to be.
And the idea that they're gonna go, that, that.
They're suddenly gonna be like, ooh, I'm just gonna go get a job now. Yeah.
It, it's a, it's a long process, um, with a lot of missteps and, and mistakes. Um, but again, I if, if we want it to be, um, I don't want to say, uh, I'm not gonna pout if you guys tell me, hey, look, we're, we're gonna go status quo, come back at me, you know, at the end of the year or the beginning of twenty-six, if there's more incidences. I feel we're, we're doing the best we can with the tools we got. And you know, know that the problem is going to be managed and not solved.
I'm gonna jump in here. Um, I think personally, I, I, I think that would be good if, if we re-approach it beginning of twenty twenty-six after the, especially the summer season has concluded. I know that, that can be a busier period um in the, in the local area. Question for you would be, um, again, officers um will, like, offer resources. What is that, not necessarily, like, walk me through the specific interaction, but like, when does an officer make an approach, I guess, to offer resources? Um, because there's that, that enforcement mechanism, so, like, what does that look?
So, um, you know, we have a roll call before every shift. And if they say, you know, we've seen uh Paul Loria out there on the corner, oh, yeah, I dealt with him, you know, uh, you know, four times, oh, did you ta- stop and talk to him? Yeah, I talked to him, I offered. So, there's that type of chatter going around, but then when Officer Pavlowski drives by, she may not even stop because it's been told that, you know, another officer made contact, they're there. Um, so we don't, we don't uh barrage, you know, hit them with, you know, every time you see him, offer, we, we don't do that. Our park rangers deal with a, a lot of the homeless. You know, so it's, it's, it's just one of those issues that
Um, I don't know if there's like a formal, like, resource sheet or something of, like, again, that, um, going back to pamphlets, but um, uh, just, um, like, kind of just prepping, like, officers and Parks and Rec um staff, just on, like, when you have that interaction, just
There is. There is.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, there is.
Is there a possibility to have um officers, like, patrol the down, walk the downtown?
Yeah.
Like, on the weekends, like, stuff, or?
Yeah, um, and we, we have a few of the, uh, the officers, especially night shift officers, they will do it. Um, day shift officers, uh, sometimes, um, but not nearly as much as night shift because night shift get out, they, they, they shake doors. They're checking all the doors downtown. You, you wouldn't believe um what they find. It's,
Oh, I'm sure.
It's quite interesting.
Still have a point I want to make, but, sorry.
No, you're okay.
I think it would be really relevant to speak with um the Restoration House and with other partners in the community. Bob worked at the Restoration House for several years. I volunteered there. They used to have pretty much a policy, and I, I know we're talking about all the rules they have, but that the people who were guests at the ho- at the, at the Restoration House were, were kind of not permitted to, to panhandle in any way. Because it was, the idea was, is that let's get, you're here, we're getting you resources, we want you to get resources to get a, you know, to get a job, find other ways to make money, get the other help you need. And so I think it would be interesting to work with other stakeholders to find out how, how we can work in harmony with the people that are, we can't just say, here, take this help. We want to find out, like, let's work in, in harmony with, with what's already happening, you know, kind of like we were talking about with the
The Ophium.
But I, I would be in support of a, of, of an ordinance because, you know, it's one of those things where we don't need it until we need it. And, and, and this is maybe an early sign that we might need it. So I would, so, I mean, I understand waiting to a certain extent, but I think in the meantime, if, if I, my, my recommendation would be to have a conversation with stakeholders that are other, on the other end, or on the human services side of what we're trying to accomplish here by having an ordinance.
If there's interest, yeah, if there is interest in drafting an ordinance, at le- if, like, by at least the commissioner, then yeah, I would say Paul's got a good sense for what we're talking about here. So if you want, if that's something you want to work on.
I, I, I just wanted to, is it, I was told today that, does the Restoration House empty during the day? Can you not stay there during the day?
No, no, the new one, you, it's, you, you
The bedroom area, so like the sleeping bunks, you can't stay in there, but like the common spaces and everything, though, I'm all but certain that those are available, but I know the sleeping areas, those
It's not that you have to leave the premise.
I think that's right. I think they have computers where they can do jobs.
You do have to leave the premise? And I think that's what I was told, and, and I unfortunately, and I'm embarrassed to say, I was slow out of the gate confirming. Um, but when I mentioned this, or when I was talking to a, a, um, resident about this, um, they mentioned that, well, the Restoration House, they have to leave during the day. And I bet you that's why we're seeing an uptick in what we're seeing. And it kind of, it, I'm like, you know, I, I, it, it, it kind of makes sense, or that's, I shouldn't say makes sense. It, it, that could be the reason why we're seeing it. Because I, if I, I mean, again, putting myself in their shoes, I would not um venture far away from the, the needs where I'm gonna get my needs met um to some sort of, of level. I, I wouldn't venture far from there. You know, so I get that, too. So.
I feel like we have pretty good direction. Um, I want to finish, uh, help finish up conversation. I know Commissioner Zhang wanted to speak. Was there anyone else after Commissioner Zhang, any final points people want to get in line for?
Because I'm, I'm saying that, you know, the business and residents are looking for us to do something. Now, a certain percentage of people need help, and we know that. In fact, we're doing a lot for that. And, and the reason, that, that closes, they don't offer meals at that place, and they go to the, say, go to the soup kitchen, and so there's other things in the community that help. But, uh, I would expect that federal funding for a lot of the programs we see is gonna go down and not go up in this next few years, and so it could be getting worse. And the, these people who need the money, they're gonna look for some way to get it, but uh, in terms of, of an ordinance, uh, you know, if they have to panhandle, sometimes if you set a rule, and some, I think most of the time when you tell people, hey, this one, there's a law against it, so you can get in a lot of trouble, they'll say, okay, I won't do it. And some of the kind of laws that are important, at least for me, is the kind when they, they stop you and they impede you, they won't let you around, they won't take no for an answer, they, and it's, they're desperate, they need the money. But on the other hand, that is frightening to people. And, and, and it depends who you are. But the point is, as, as a commission, we need to make sure that we're looking out for the business area, but more important for those individuals, whether they're from our community or not, if somebody gets in their way, stops them, won't let go, won't, you know, we can't have that kind of panhandling. There's got to be some panhandling rules. I mean, you can't stop a person from, from his free speech rights. But we, we can set some guidelines, and there needs to be something so that when you explain, if you went out there and said, listen, I can appreciate you asking them, but don't stand in your way. If they want to walk past you, let them walk past you because you can be in a lot of trouble. There's a law against this, and you don't want to get a ticket or go to jail. And they'll say, you're right, I don't. So they'll follow the rules. That's important. But you got, if we look for some rules, I would look for the uh, the police director, the public safety director to set some rules up that, that he can enforce. And then bring them to us because we should be doing something. Panhandling is gonna happen. And those people need it, but there's public safety part two. That's my comments.
I just want to, um, would there be any interest in, and, and I realize this may be pushing the issue or pushing the problem, but, but would there be any interest in setting a geographical boundary that between that here, here, an east border, a west border, north border, south border, or north border, south border? Um, there's no panhandling. It's not prohibited, but you go outside that and they can do that, or is that?
I don't know if that accomplishes.
It hit me when I'm up here, so I'm literally thinking in real time, and sometimes that's dangerous for me.
Picking it down the road as we said.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I'd say no to that myself.
All right. Well, we're gonna sus- you sustain that, okay. Yeah, I get it. Okay.
But definitely interest in seeing an ordinance, which you can come up with there. There's, there's interest from some part of the commission, so I'd be, so bringing that forward. What that direction looks like and everything, we'll see as it gets developed. But you understand the reservations that I think, the number of members of the
Yep. I also know that, um, it just takes one mishandling, and it, 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 it's devastating. So I, I get the level of seriousness and, and, you know, the delicate balance. So I, I do recognize that.
Thank you, um, Director Loria. Um, right now, it is ten forty-seven. There being no other business before the commission at this time. I'm going to have a stand adjourned.
There we go.
Just looking at panhandling ordinances.
Thank you for, actually, everybody, thank you for the good discussions this evening.